Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, August 14th, 2017 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you are all here with us this evening. I would ask if you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
I think she's running late. Hopefully, she'll be joining us shortly.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mr. Z is out of the country, I believe. And Mayor Tarter?
I'm here also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get started with our meeting tonight, I would like to ask you all to observe a moment of silence for those killed and injured in the horrible attack in Charlottesville over this past weekend. We stand in solidarity with the city of Charlottesville and the people of Charlottesville and mourn those affected by this senseless violence. If you could please observe a moment of silence with me, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. We're going to have a resolution in a minute or two, but I wanted to start the meeting with that, and so thank you very much. Do we have a motion regarding adoption of the meeting agenda?
I'd like to amend the meeting agenda to add TR 17-32 under Item 6, Proclamations and Special Presentations.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. The ayes have it. We now have an adopted meeting agenda with an addition to our next item, which is proclamations and special presentations. So, let's move on to that item. To my knowledge, there are no other proclamations or special presentations this evening other than the one we just added. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. And for that, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Vice Mayor Conley, who will speak to the resolution. If she could, actually read the resolution for the benefit of the public, I think would be quite good.
I'd like to offer a resolution in support of the city of Charlottesville and reaffirmation of the city of Falls Church's commitment to the values of equality, inclusion, diversity, and rule of law. Whereas the violent and racist events that took place on August 11th and 12th, 2017, in Charlottesville were an attack on all citizens of the Commonwealth, and whereas the city of Falls Church stands in solidarity with the city of Charlottesville and law enforcement, and whereas the independent cities of Virginia play a unique role in our Commonwealth as communities of hope, diversity, and progress, and whereas white nationalism, white supremacism, and neo-Nazism are real threats to the social fabric of our Commonwealth and our country, and whereas free speech is a cornerstone of every right that we have as Americans, however these organizations promote agendas that are in conflict with our nation's principles of liberty and justice for all and the rule of law, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has made progress toward bridging divisions and uniting communities so that our children may inherit a better, more tolerant world, and whereas now is the time to reject hatred, stand up for democracy, and stand together against those who threaten our brothers and sisters, and whereas the city of Falls Church enjoys a rich diversity of people who live and work here, sustaining and supporting our vibrant community, and whereas the city council wishes to preserve, protect, and ensure that all people are welcome and able to participate as enfranchised citizens of the city. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Falls Church, Virginia, rejects and denounces violent extremism and terrorism of all kinds, including racist and bigoted ideologies of white nationalists, white supremacists, and neo-Nazis, and be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Falls Church encourages all citizens to stand in solidarity with the citizens of Charlottesville by reaffirming our city's commitment to the values of equality, inclusion, diversity, and rule of law.
Thank you very much. Do we have a... Thank you. Do we have a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take a vote? Madam Clerk? And if there are any citizen comments, are there any comments from anyone in the community? Anyone would like to speak, certainly welcome to. If not, is there anyone on council who would like to add anything to that resolution? If not, Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and call the roll of vote on this?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on. Do we have any oaths of office to administer to a new board and commission members?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to public comment. Do we have any written comments that you're going to summarize for us? I imagine we do. We always seem to have...
We do.
Okay.
We've got two comments about the bike share locations. The Falls Church Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee wrote in support of the bike share program, and Rob Puente of 705 Fulton Avenue also wrote in support of the program. We had comments on the Railroad Avenue cottages application. David Jacobs of 1006 Fowler Street and Candace de Mateus of 2509 Fowler Street asked that neighborhood concerns be addressed before approval of the application. Mike Leahy of 1304 Ellison Street and Allison Miller of 605 South Spring Street asked that the application be denied because of fire safety concerns. Matthew Bella of 2506 Fowler Street and Jennifer Smith both wrote in opposition to the project. We had some comments about the 116 Great Falls Street application. The Village Preservation and Improvement Society wrote in opposition to the rezoning ordinance for the project. Melissa Teetz of Ridge Place wrote in opposition to the application and outlined reasons that she voted against it in her capacity as a planning commission member. Pat Myers of 115 Buxton Road, Margaret Whitehead, and John Bottiker wrote in opposition to the application. Charles Moore, a member of the Historical Architectural Review Board, wrote in opposition to the application and outlined reasons that the board did not support it. Regina Flahy of 207 Garden Court, Michael Sloanham, 219 James Thurber Court, Peter Smyrnatopoulos of Garden Court, and Diane Bartley of 331 James Court wrote in support of the application.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go on to receipt of public comments. Right now, we have four speaker slips. Now, we have five. Five? No, we have six. Seven? Do we have eight? Nine? We do have... We actually have nine speakers, I think, now. But you're welcome to either speak now, and you can leave if you'd like, or wait until your item is called. And so, it's up to you when you want to speak now, or, for example, if you're speaking on the Railroad Avenue project, you can wait until the project is called and then speak at that point. So, just let me know what you'd like to do. We would ask that you would keep your comments to three minutes in the interest of time, and please state your name and address for the record. My apologies in advance for any names that I butcher. So, let me start with Julie Harrison, followed by Carol Schu.
Actually, I gave you my...
Excuse me?
I'd like to go last.
Okay. Carol Schu? Okay. Ms. Schmidt? Okay. Mr. Feltman?
I am here because of Cindy Mester's report later. I am Ken Feltman, and I live on Hillwood Avenue. I am president of the Citizens Board of the Falls Church Cable Access Corporation, FCCAC. First, thank you, Cindy Mester, for devoting your time and energy toward this project. We encourage the council to read her suggestions and also our continuing concerns, and then discuss them with us in a work session environment. When we FCCAC board members reviewed the working group report, we found that some of the concerns that we had had not been addressed. Fundamentally, the city is simply not treating FCCAC equally as required by the written agreement among the three parties: the schools, the city, and the cable access board. And it seems that the city may not understand that FCCAC is an independent entity that exists to provide citizen programming without entanglement by the city or schools making additional rules, and that entanglement could raise First Amendment issues. The specific misunderstanding has impeded citizen participation and caused frustration for potential program producers. Some producers have even stopped trying to create videos at FCC TV. But rather than spend more time looking back, let's move ahead. Therefore, I want to repeat an offer I made earlier this year. Let's shake hands and work together. Let's say, forget the past. That's history. Let's move forward together to make FCC TV better than ever. We FCCAC board members are ready and willing to go forward with you. We will do what we can to make the TV station better than ever. We hope that you and the city staff will join in and help us. You represent the citizens; so do we. Join our efforts. Let's all work to make FCC TV function for the three equal partners: the schools, the city, and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Rankin. Richard Rankin? Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Mr. Rankin. I live at 1200 Lincoln Avenue. I am a FCCAC board member and treasurer. I've been elected twice by the city council to serve as your city representative on the board, and for that, I thank you very much for that. I'm not going to take a lot of your time right now. I want to focus in on three particular issues. One is, and we've been struggling with this for quite some time, is that as the citizens' representative in the public access channel, we are looking for one-third of the citizens' time to get on the broadcast schedule. Each of the three parties gets one-third. We would like to have one-third of the time of the station staff so that we could help produce programming and get other administrative issues done. We want to be respected as one of the three parties in the PEG agreement. We believe we have a lot to bring to the station. Personally, I got involved with one of our producers and helped to do a nice little program that we did just recently. It's going to be airing August 25th on the cable channel, so I hope you have an opportunity to see it. It's going to be at 5:30 PM. We've sent you today a nice six-page report in response to the city's work, and we want to thank Cindy for pulling that particular final report together. We have some very important differences, and I know you have a lot on your plate right now, but sometime this week or over the weekend, when you're not mowing the yard, or going shopping, or doing something like that, take 10 minutes. Read that report. It's very important. We took a lot of time putting that together. I think you'll find some nice insights that down the road may help as far as explaining what we're trying to do with all three PEG partners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the community. Our next speaker is Mr. Dorsey. Would you like to speak now? Okay. Welcome.
My name is Joe Dorsey. I live at 1002 Railroad Avenue, Falls Church, Virginia. At least, that's where I used to live until my... I used to live until my house caught on fire. I wore my cap not as a form of disrespect, but as a form of respect. I'd like to tip my cap to Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Mary Beth, and to Bob Young, who I've been in opposition with on this cottage project, because Bob came by twice. The mayor called me, and we got a nice email from them, so this is my tip of the cap to you. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask your indulgence for the three minutes for just a sec, because I just want to say a couple of seconds. I want to give my... express my gratitude to the police department and chief, who was on-site at 5:00 in the morning, or maybe earlier, I don't remember the exact time, when our house was on fire, and to the firefighters who came to help us. Their duty and their service was extraordinary, and I can't extend the gratitude. I just can't express it well now. My wife and my two boys are doing well. We have dealt with harder things than this. We've dealt with deaths in the family in our lives, and this is... For us, this is like minor league. We've already played in the major leagues, and so this is just a movement on. In tipping my cap to Bob, I'm looking around. Bob, thank you. So, I just wanted to note his... He came by twice, and I have to tell you, that meant something to me personally. I think what happened should create a pause for all of you who get to decide what's going to happen moving forward. It was very scary. It was 4:00 in the morning, 4:15 in the morning, and the smoke detectors went off. We went out, and we're on a one-lane road. We got out. Here we have... We counted four heads and a pussycat, and, you know, at the end of the day, that's really all that matters. The rest of it's just stuff. But I think it might be an opportunity for the city council to take pause and just think about the density and the future of what Falls Church really wants to be. So, right now, what I would ask is that you just delay the vote that you were planning to take tonight and push it forward so that we can let things settle a little bit and take another look. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If there's anything we can do as a city to help you and your family get back on your feet, I think you have the full commitment of council and city government to help you in any way we can.
I'm very grateful for that, and you may hear me when I'm talking about various little things that we might need. So, yeah, you might be hearing from it.
Great. Great. Our next speaker is Ms. Dorsey.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Dorsey. I reside at 1002 Railroad Avenue, at least we used to as of seven days ago. I'd like to reiterate concerns that I've brought forward to this council in the past regarding the proposed development of the railroad cottages. This has to do with the location at the end of a one-lane dead-end road with limited ingress and egress, the density of 12 structures on 1.25 acres, and access. Again, I am not opposed in theory to the development of this cottage complex. I am merely saying that this is not the proper location for something that is groundbreaking and historical for the city. My first concern has to do with public safety and access to this end of the property. According to the letter that Mike Leahy wrote to the council, the firemen tried to access our yard through his on Ellison Street because it was too difficult to get all the way down to the end of our cul-de-sac. This leads me to have grave concerns about the 12 structures proposed to be built on the small parcel of land. My second serious public safety concern has to do with the response time of the fire trucks. On Sunday, 6 August, I made three phone calls to 911. The first at 4:16 AM. I hit the Fairfax Tower on my cellphone, and I was transferred to Arlington. Seven minutes later, at 4:23, I had to call back because the fire trucks had not arrived. I was placed on hold four times by Arlington County 911. The windows were popping in my house because of the heat, the smoke was coming out, and so were the flames. I then had to call a third time at 4:29 because while the Falls Church City Police Department was there, they were also dismayed that there was no fire response. Over 14 minutes passed before a fire truck arrived at our house. Every Falls Church City resident should be deeply concerned about this response time because this tragedy could happen to anyone. My second concern: we learned today that city staff is asking us, the railroad homeowners, for an easement of six feet onto our property. I hate to say, but we don't have six feet to give; otherwise, I cannot park a car in my driveway. So, we are very concerned about this proposed easement, and why can't this be sought from Nova Parks on the other side of the road? Falls Church City wants to get this right with the first-ever cottage housing project. I strongly urge the council to delay the vote and reexamine these critical public safety issues in light of a very real event that happened last week. Lastly, I'd also like to reiterate Joe's comments and publicly acknowledge Mayor Tarter for calling, Mary Beth Conley for emailing, and Bob, thank you for coming by. We really do appreciate the demonstration of humanity, of care and concern, that we can disagree, but yet we can still unite together. I'd also like to thank Mary Gavin for showing up, the excellent job by her staff, the Falls Church City Police Department, and the Arlington County Fire Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just before we go forward, are we going to hear from the city manager on the fire response issue?
Yes, you will, and Chief Cavan has joined us this evening for that purpose as well.
Okay. Good. We can discuss it then. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to our next speaker. Gordon Thies? Okay. All right. Our last speaker then is Tim Stevens.
Thank you. Tim Stevens, 505 North Oak Street. Mayor Tarter, members of council. I'm here on behalf of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber supports the introduction of capital bike share in the city. We believe it'll be helpful to our businesses and general enhancement of the city. Careful selection of the sites is needed in order to ensure that it'll be helpful to our businesses and to maximize value to the city as a whole. Particularly, it'd be important when the city runs out of the grant money to maintain the bike share stations, and therefore, it's going to depend on the subscription. So, placement of those stations is going to be very critical to maximize the amount of subscriptions that we get. Chamber looks forward to the launch of the program, and will do what we can to help promote awareness, and we're pleased to work with the city to develop bike share sponsorship and advertising opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, that's it for the speakers who wish to speak at this point. If there's anyone else who... Oh, we have one more speaker? Oh, did you want to speak now? Okay. I wasn't sure if you wanted to do that or wait until the item was called. Come on in then. Sure. Ms. Harrison?
Good evening. My name is Julie Harrison. I live at 1220 Ellison Street. Before I start, can I get a show of hands in this room of anybody who biked here tonight? You're too dressed up, Laddie, so I don't think you did. So, I assume people walked? Drove? Okay. Thank you. I'm here to talk about the proposal for railroad cottages. This is the wrong location for a project like this due to the limitations of the site. I'm going to talk about five issues: fire safety, density, parking, lack of green space, and easement from the neighbors. Fire safety: Nova Park Authority refuses to issue a permanent easement on their land for the widening of the road or the fire truck turnaround area. As you know, the Dorseys just suffered a fire, and the fire trucks had difficulty accessing them. Secondly, density: R1A residential zoning is the lowest density in the city. As the Village Preservation Society pointed out, this proposal of 12 buildings does not fit with the character or feel of the rest of the neighborhood. The proposal has minimum setbacks, maximum square footage, and is too dense for this awkward site of only 1.25 acres. Much of it is unusable due to the triangle shape. The units will be spaced only six feet apart, giving no visual separation. Parking: according to the ordinance, all parking generated by the site must be hosted on the site. Only 13 spots are being offered, when we predict approximately 20 to 25 cars daily. Why set up a project from the beginning to fail? Moreover, the developer's solution to install parallel parking along the perimeter front edge of the property is in direct violation of the ordinance because this consumes green space that is intended to provide a visual buffer for the W&amp;O D trail users, and Nova Park Authority is requiring that the handicap drop-off location be removed, as is their legal right as landowners. That means there is no handicap parking available. Every single staff report and comment from the boards and commissions echoes a sentiment that parking is inadequate. Lack of green space: all of the bungalow courts, as they're referred to on the West Coast, have a primary tenant of green space. This railroad project has virtually no common usable green space. The developer is counting the walkway and the parking area, as well as the inaccessible part of the triangle, as their green space. The units could be designed at one end of the complex with parking in the middle and more green space. The developer and architect act as if this is the only design plan that will work, when in fact, let's face it, this is the design that makes them the most profit. Easement from the neighbors: it is my understanding that the city is now asking the homeowners on railroad to grant easements through their yards for the road to be widened. This is not the right solution. The city is essentially asking these homeowners to give up their property rights for free to give up their front yards. The front yards are very small to begin with. It is not their responsibility to hand over their front yards. Please postpone decision-making or voting on this until you've had a work session to discuss the new developments. Please postpone your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I've got Ms. Schu... Carol Schu. Did you want to speak now, or did you want to wait until the item is called? Okay. Welcome.
... subject of the railroad cottages. My name is Carol Schu. I live on Sewell Avenue, 7201. I'm one of the people directly impacted by the railroad cottages, and I ask the council to vote no to the zoning variance that would allow the construction of the railroad cottages. The objections to this project have been well articulated and should be dispositive. The recent fire on Railroad Avenue illustrates the reality of the objections. The council wrote the zoning variance to allow only one project to be considered at a time. You want to see how it goes before approving further variances. Well, you know how it will go. You've been told by countless residents who could predict how this project would ruin the neighborhood. If you approve this variance, you break faith with the people who bought their properties expecting to enjoy their houses and beloved neighborhood without grievous harm. That's what zoning laws are for. If this project goes through, no one in Falls Church can feel safe that their peace will be undisturbed and their property values won't fall. No one objects to senior housing or cottage housing in general, but this particular project has too many problems that make it untenable. Keep the zoning the same and let the developers build conventional houses as the zoning permits. Goodness knows, there is a market for them. On the single block of Ellison that parallels Sewell Avenue, there have been four tear-downs with large houses constructed in their place in the last two years. My neighbors on Sewell have added two second-story additions in the same time period, and on the single block of Fowler between Ellison and Railroad Avenue, there have been three added in the same short time. These have all sold immediately. That's what people want. I believe that no one will buy these railroad cottages. They're too small, too expensive, and too inconvenient. Figurous people in their 50s don't want to downsize. People in their 60s and 70s have mobility issues and want to park next to their homes. They need to be able to carry their groceries a short distance. They don't want to cope with stairs. They don't want to walk to downtown Falls Church. This railroad cottages project is bad for the neighbors and bad for the developers. There's no market for this project. I haven't seen any market studies that show that these houses would sell. Based on comments from people who were initially interested in buying the houses and who decided once they knew the details that they wouldn't buy them, I believe that this project will flop. Please, save us all from this debacle and vote against the railroad cottages. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Are there any council requests? Any council requests? Okay. Seeing none, let's move on to the city manager's report. Ms. Messner is fiddling. Abely...
I'd like to cover three topics prior to the FCC TV briefing. One is the schedule for Miller House, an update on neighborhood traffic calming that was requested from council members, and then, as mentioned earlier, follow-up on the fire communications issues related to the railroad fire for which Chief Gavin has joined us this evening. Separately, when we're discussing the actual railroad application project, then we can review the easement status with Nova Parks and the road access piece, because there's two issues here. One is the communication coordination response, and then separately is the access related to the project. Starting first with Miller House, I just wanted to acknowledge that we do have that scheduled to come back to work session with council on September 5th and referral to the planning commission if council so directs for September 11th. This is a follow-up on the project that we've been working on for a while to provide housing for at-risk disabled youth of the citizen in the community and utilize this house in partnership with community residents. So recently, Mr. Shields did forward to council the terms. She's related to that. We have addressed the financing gap, the financial loan acquisition in terms of land ownership, and the staff is following up with CRI to ensure that their terms, along with being acceptable to them, are also acceptable to their financial institutions so they can get the loan and proceed if council so directs that. So I wanted to highlight that schedule for council. Staff is available to receive questions tonight or prior to September 5th so that we're prepared for that work session. Ms. Vincent is here tonight to either hear the questions or help follow up with those if council desires this evening. As it relates to neighborhood traffic calming, we had several in process that included light solutions, some of which are in areas where we're trying to get them done early in the school year so there'll be increased safety for all pedestrians, including our youth. So council had requested an update, which I'm pleased to provide. This is from Jeff Sykes, who's our planning staff lead, as well as Stephanie Rogers, who's the Public Works staff on this. So for North Maple Avenue, that project has 100% design. Bidders have received the notification, and bid opening will be August 28th. So that will proceed shortly thereafter. It's a little more complex than the next two, which are striping plans, but still not that complex, and we're targeting end of September for action, assuming we get the bids and we can execute the rest of the contract. For Lincoln Avenue, which is a striping plan, and Northwest, which is a striping plan from Staples to Great Falls, those proposals have gone out. We're pending the design back from our design engineers, and then we should be able to proceed pretty quickly for implementation. These will be ramps and refuge islands, and so not a complex design. Public Works is estimating those also can be done by the end of September. So I wanted to report on those two items, and then ask if Chief Gavin could join us at the podium to speak to where we are in the follow-up review with Fairfax County and Arlington in terms of the response time to the railroad avenue fire that the Dorsey's experienced.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having me here tonight. Indeed, everything that you've heard from the Dorsey's is true, and the timing is fairly accurate. I don't know of the exact timing, but I'm here to tell you that it's unacceptable. And I told Mrs. Dorsey when I arrived on the scene, and we discussed exactly how this all came about, that it was absolutely unacceptable, the timeframe in which it took to get fire services there. I also appreciate the Dorsey's resilience. I mean, starting off with having a smoke detector that works, gathering their senses and their loved ones and their pets to get out of the house and not fight the fire was what saved them. And they spoke very eloquently on the bike path. We stood there four or five o'clock in the morning and talked about their plan as a family, and that's what saves lives. Families have smoke detectors, they have a plan, and they execute. And that's exactly what they did. You heard that tonight and their attitude. When police and fire got there, they're very grateful for the service. But the problem we have here tonight, and what we'll be looking into, is the process in which the 911 was sent, delivered, and/or accepted. What I have is interjurisdictional contracts with Arlington County's dispatch. We are a secondary dispatch here in Falls Church. When you call on a 911 on a cellphone, it goes to the closest tower, which could put you into Fairfax or could put you into Arlington. So the investigation is being led by Arlington County's Fire Department because the primary service that night was fire. The day after, two days after the fire, I met with the fire chief, Jimmy Bonzano. He too wants me to relay to all of you that it's unacceptable response time. Again, fire, once they were dispatched, were there fairly shortly after, probably within five to six minutes. But it's in that process in which Mrs. Dorsey had to go through on, may have been on hold or in transfer, that we're looking into. Arlington has assured us that they will have an after-action within the next week or two, and we will be at the table. What you will find in most public safety after actions is it goes through all of the notes, may it be the voice of the Dorsey's, and the timing in which they called in to either, may it be Fairfax, Arlington, and the calls that came into Falls Church. All of those calls will be examined, the timings will be examined, and so will the protocols for how you dispatch fire. I do not have the answers for the investigation as of yet. I anticipate, like I said, in the next week and a half to two weeks from, to hear from Chief Bonzano, for us to sit down, talk about the after-action, and then what are the corrective actions after that. So I'll have a full report for you then. But I would like to just express to you how serious Chief Bonzano is taking this. He's been in contact with me probably every other day after this event, making sure I'm up on where the investigation is. I can say, at the scene, when I was standing there talking to the Dorsey's, the battalion chief, I tally, was taking data down, understanding that the response was way too delayed. So we have essentially two investigations going on: the cause of the fire, and then the process in which the communications were so delayed. Any questions?
Yeah, we've got some questions up here, if you don't mind. Let's start with Ms. Hardy.
Great, thank you for joining us, Chief. I think we all share your sentiments that the communication issues and response time was absolutely unacceptable, so I'm glad that there is some serious investigation that's going to be underway. I certainly would like to be copied on the output of that report, so maybe it would be a good work session topic for us when we meet again in September, if we can note that on the agenda. Couple follow-up questions. I heard that the initial calls were made on cellphones. Given that more and more people don't have landlines anymore, is that going to be a common issue where if people are calling from their cellphones, they're going to get bounced to whatever tower, and it may not get to the right place in the first place? And if so, what sort of technology or steps do we have to kind of help with that issue?
You're right, most people do have cellphones and are giving up their landlines. The technology with cellphones played a part in this, but I'm not certain that is the main issue. Certainly, if you're on the edge of the city, you may be, depending on what tower the cellphone pings off of, it may go to Fairfax or it may go to Arlington. Transfers like that happen all of the time. And because we're a secondary PSAP in Falls Church, we always get our 911s transferred. And so this one is unusual. I think it fell into a address question as to, is it Falls Church? Is it Fairfax? As far as fire protocol, as to how they dispatch, I think will be examined with the human error portion of the transfer. I just don't have all the answers. In terms of next-generation 911, there is supposed to be a greater sense as to how you can capture where a cellphone is. Mrs. Dorsey gave the address. They had the address. They knew where she was. It wasn't a matter of trying to find the cellphone. It was trying to ensure, may it be from an Arlington dispatcher or from Fairfax dispatcher, is that in the city or is that in Fairfax County? I think that's where the issue is in this investigation. As far as moving forward with next-generation 911, yes. I believe there are different phases in which how you, they can identify cellphone locations. There's essentially two locations now, two phases that they call it, in which they can identify cellphones. Most of, it is triangulation off of the cell towers and where the phone call comes from. And then there's a second phase. In a real emergency, the dispatcher has the ability to do what they call ping the phone and get a, when I say exact location, a more general and exact location as to where the caller may be. It's still within 300 to 500 feet, but the dispatchers do have that ability to do that. Depending on the service provided by that cellphone, sometimes it's difficult to get the information, sometimes they give it up right away. So the technologies are getting better. I would dare say the next-generation 911 does have more capabilities in tracking cellphones. That helps.
Thank you. My second question is unrelated to the communication issues and getting response there, is once people got there, how was access on railroad avenues as it currently stands? Did our fire and response and police have difficulty getting on or orchestrating the response to the fire?
It's a narrow street. Even the approach to railroad is a narrow street in Fowler because they're parked on both sides. And I talked to Chief Bonzano about that in terms of, because I know that was an issue. He had told me, and I think most fire people will tell you, is that there is a tactical approach in which how you approach a fire. A lot of times, they'll put the heavy equipment, ladders, and what they need to fight the fire in the front, and then the engines with the water and the hoses that are pulled into the back, and then other support units are behind. That's exactly what they did. In talking to the chief, I said, you know, and knowing where that is, and he actually drove by the house later, he told me, and he goes, "Mary, you know and I know that when we roll on addresses that are very narrow roads, we adapt." And that's what they did. If there would have been a car parked on Railroad Avenue, they would have bumped it out of the way. That would have been really tight. It's tight, but it's not unusual for fire to be working in those conditions.
Mr. Snyder, then Vice Mayor Connolly.
Sure. Thanks, Chief, for getting on this. We talked at the end of last week, and I'm very appreciative of your report tonight. And certainly, we would like to invite you back when the report is finished. A couple issues: the overall protocols for receiving calls and which units are dispatched where in the city, is this an issue? Well, first of all, it should never be an issue, but is the issue different in different parts of the city? And I think what we need to do is make sure that we're getting an adequate response time regardless of where people are. If you're in a different part of the city, you're not adjoining Fairfax County, you're adjoining Arlington County, or you're adjoining Alexandria. So the question will be, what are the overall fire response protocols? And is there any additional work that needs to be done that this case unfortunately shows a need to do? So the overall communications protocols and the fire response protocols, I think, hopefully you'll be reviewing all those, and I assume that you were. With regard to the IT issues and next-gen 911, if you have some legislative or other recommendations regarding that, that would be appreciated as well. If we need the ability for 911 centers to be able to know where cellphone calls are made from, once a call is made, that may be something that we need to address if that's not built into the new system automatically. And finally, I would ask, if you see a role for city council, that is contacting our colleagues and any of the surrounding governing boards, if it seems that you are getting the appropriate sense of urgency, but if you're not, please let us know, and we'll be very supportive of your efforts to do that. Thank you.
Connolly?
Thank you, Chief Gavin. I just have two questions, and you probably don't have the answer, but would be nice to hear from others. One is that the fire truck was on Fowler trying to go through a backyard to get there. Is that a typical practice, or is that something we'd be concerned about?
I am not aware of that. When I got there, everyone was set in place, but I do not, I do not know there was a, I'm not doubting there might have been. I know that there were some apparatus that had to go onto the parkland to turn around, and probably in some of the negotiating, getting in and out of railroad, they were onto the parkland. I did not see them on any residential plots.
Okay. That would be something that perhaps could get in that report of, were they looking for a hydrant? And that street is, when you mentioned that we have a lot of tight streets, the other thing we have a lot of is streets that are half in Fairfax and half in Falls Church. And if they were not sure the jurisdiction of this address, I'm sure there's a lot of other addresses in Falls Church that they may not be sure of as well. You know, Timber Lane switches back and forth, and Abbott Lane, and almost every street has addresses in different jurisdictions. And how do we make sure, in the future, that they know where these addresses are?
I have to say, you know, I've worked with Station 6 now for over, almost like, a decade and beyond that, when I was with Arlington County. And the consistency of the firefighters there, particularly the ones with boots on the ground, have been here a long time. And they have a great sense of where the addresses are, the firefighters. The firefighters aren't the ones receiving the call. It may be what I'm suggesting in the communications of the receiving and accepting the information, where did that go in dispatch? I have no doubt that the firefighters, one, made a tactical approach, knowing what railroad presented them in terms of tightness. Because when I talked to them, they were the ones, what were talking to me about protocol. And I don't want to speak to all fire protocol, because when fire dispatches, they have a different way of dispatching. I will tell you straight up, from the moment that this occurred, in talking to the firefighters on the scene and Chief Bonzano, they were like, regardless, if Fairfax took this or Arlington took this, it should have been dispatched immediately, period, end. Doesn't matter what the address is. It's a fire, and in certain boxes, it wouldn't matter who came. You know, primarily, our jurisdiction, our contract is with Arlington Fire, but they switch jurisdictions and come to each other's fires interchangeably all of the time. We have Fairfax County coming in here for fire services and EMS every day, particularly up on the edges like the Eden Center or the schools, Kaiser. We have a lot of fire service that comes in and serves us. But on a house fire, it needs to be immediate, and Chief Bonzano was adamant about that. It doesn't matter who takes the call. They need to make the dispatch immediate.
That's good to know. Thanks.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Chief, for coming and giving us your usual straight talk, and we appreciate that these are questions that really are not specifically in your area, and thank you for trying to answer them. So what I'm hearing is really that it's a training, staff training issue on dispatch, as much as anything. Just a guess, but from what you're saying, I'm not quite sure how to square that with the, you know, you get a call, you send a truck, period, you know, and, but what you said earlier about, you know, the firefighters know where these addresses are, maybe dispatch doesn't, tells me that, you know, particularly on the edges, and this is a matter of some urgency, because school's about ready to begin now, and we certainly don't want an episode like this to occur again anywhere, but particularly in a heavy-use area like Mount Daniel or any other place that's on the fringes of the city that, you know, people need to know where it is and how to get there. So I assume that, you know, their after-action report will deal with staff training on dispatch. But if it works the way it's supposed to, let's just say, the call pings to Fairfax Tower, the Fairfax Tower... So I assume that, you know, their after-action report will deal with staff training on dispatch. But if it works the way it's supposed to, let's just say, the, the call pings to Fairfax Tower, the Fairfax Tower sends it to Fairfax 911, they, you know, they got phones, I mean, I just called up 1002 railroad avenue, and within five seconds, you can see where it is. And I'm sure people who do this for a living, you know, are trained, or should be trained, to know where things are. It would show us being in Falls Church, maybe then Fairfax would call Arlington immediately and say, Arlington, this is your fire. And, you know, it's almost the process that you described, in that the truck gets sent immediately. But if that's the way it's supposed to work, let's try to make sure that, you know, we encourage the fire folks to maybe come to us at that work session and hear from their own mouths, you know, that it will work that way. The second thing is the sort of geometry of tight spaces that you referred to. You know, we have a lot of those at the city. When I, I was out of town when the fire happened, and the first thing I thought was, this is the kind of thing that could happen, let's say, near where I live, at the Fields Apartments on Ellison Street. If there's a fire there on, you know, yoga and church night, nobody is getting down Ellison Street with anything, because it's, it's barely wider than a goat path once cars park on both sides. And I assume that that is a training challenge, an awareness and a training challenge, but again, as you all come back to us, you know, maybe it would be helpful to identify particular places, other places in the city where, you know, the, the quarters are very tight, and maybe people need to be aware of where they park their cars, or maybe, you know, you all need to be aware of how those spaces need to be policed a little much, so, so that people don't park right up to the curb, you know, creating an opportunity for the truck to turn. But this sort of thing could happen in a number of places in the city of Falls Church. And being aware of where those places are, the Fields is just the first place that I thought of, because it's near me. And I observe that at least once a week, that getting down Ellison Street behind the Taco Bell is virtually impossible. It becomes a, a one-lane street, basically. It's something that, again, in early September, it would be maybe helpful to hear your thoughts on. I'm sure you know where all those tight quarter spaces are, too. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Oliver.
One last small technical question. I know that the Falls Church City Police Department has two public lines, an emergency and a non-emergency. If a call came in about a fire on the emergency line, would that be another alternative? Would, would you all be able to dispatch, or would it have to get transferred?
We cannot and do not dispatch fire. Fire is dispatched through Arlington County, or Fairfax County. But we do not, because we don't, we don't control the fire department. They have actually a fire dispatch in Arlington County's dispatch center, as does, as does Fairfax County. So what their process is, when they have, that comes into their communication center, a call taker takes the call. You know, Arlington County, 911, what's your emergency? And they say, I have a fire at 102 Dor, um, excuse me, not Dorsey, but Railroad Avenue. And so what happens is then that call taker puts the information in and sends it to a dispatcher, for it to be dispatched. If they were to call the emergency line here in Falls Church, we would accept the information, we would call Arlington, the one dispatcher that I have on nights would call Arlington and say, we have a fire at, you know, 102 railroad avenue. And then they would do the same. So in, in a fire situation, you know, 911, emergency EMS, it's always best to call 911. It's easy, it's, it's the best and fastest route. If you want immediate service for, you know, Falls Church specific police, that would be shorter. You would not have a transfer in that.
Mr. Snyder, you've got a quick question.
I, I do. Just following up on really the, the importance of smoke detectors. I think we have a real-world example of that, and I think we ought to work perhaps with the Dorseys, but certainly work to make sure that we're driving home the point to have them and maintain them. So perhaps our city PIO can be working to drive home that point. I know we do every year, but I think now this might be a particularly good learning opportunity for some folks.
Okay. I want to wrap this conversation up. I would like to add and ask you a question, though. You said the after-hours report is going to focus on how the call got routed and rerouted, and how it took, why it took so long to get there. I guess to me, one of the other questions that ought to be asked is, I understand and I appreciate the fire department being adaptive to try to find a way to get down this road and make everything work, but we're, I think it's a little different in some other circumstances, because we're contemplating putting 10 new houses at the end of this road. And I guess if there are any, any information that the Arlington fire folks have, and that they would be able to impart to us based on their answering a call and, and fighting a fire on this particular street, I think that would be useful information as well. In other words, we need another two feet, or, you know, things work pretty good, we just have to have a plan on how to get in here before we even head over here, or whatever it might be, that they could convey to us, because I think this is a little different than your normal tight road situation, in that, again, we're contemplating adding density here that doesn't exist at the present.
Well, that's been done. Tom Polara, as you know, is our fire marshal, has done a lot with planning to get to a place as to understanding what the fire code recommends and, and working with planning. Tom also asked Arlington County, two officials from Arlington County, to take a look at the plans and give their opinion as to the layout of that, of that, that roadway, and where the fire hydrants are, and everything from that. So that has been done. We could always, after the after-action and the recommendations that are born out of the after-action, take another look. But this after-action is going to be based more on process and communication rather than land use and, and planning. But having said that, I could revisit that with Tom and ensure we do it again.
Well, I mean, I guess, first, I'm not asking you to make land use recommendations, but we have a real-world experience. Before, we had a plan. Now, we have a plan implemented. And I guess if there's any information they would impart-
Okay.
... based on their actual going out there and doing it. I mean, a plan is great on a piece of paper, but when you actually go out and field and do it, you may have new insights. So if there are any new insights based on they're actually going and fighting a fire on this street, I think we on council would like to hear it.
Absolutely.
If the plan was implemented perfectly and there's no issues, then we'd, I think, like to hear that as well.
Yep.
Okay. Unless there's anything else on this particular issue, we thank you for all your good work, and appreciate it, and look forward to hearing from you shortly.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the next item, which I believe is the first item of business on the agenda. Is that right now? What do we have?
Mayor, if I could do the FCC TV briefing-
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay. It's going to be a long night. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And for the other three items, if there's any other follow-up items, I'm available this week. At the request of Mr. Duncan, I was asked to report out verbally on the FCC TV Process Forward Report. This is an effort that I started last October, November, at the request of the city manager. And in this role, I was serving as a facilitator and not representing any of the three parties to the FCC TV PEG agreement. As Mr. Rankin and Mr. Feldman mentioned, that's General Government, Schools, and Access Board, a nonprofit independent. This has been a resource we've had in the community for a long time, but there were governance issues. And so I did stakeholder interviews, did a preliminary report in early December of last year. From that, after presenting to the three stakeholder groups, we formed a working group process, which had representatives from each of the three members of the PEG group. And then we had station staff participating initially, one, to try to keep a balance of a group and small, and then we added both staff so that we could make sure everybody was hearing things firsthand. We had numerous meetings monthly, and in the report that was provided to the full stakeholders on June 20th, and then subsequently emailed to all council members, all access board members, and all school board members. We have done a detailed tracking chart, a lot of the administrative processes. I'm not intending to go through that in detail this evening, but I am available to answer any questions or follow-up that council wishes to do. As we went through that process, in addition to the formal monthly meetings with the working groups, I had some sub-meetings, I had some phone calls. It was an intensive period of time to try to achieve a good working balance, addressing some of the issues that your public speaker spoke to tonight in terms of the PEG agreements, PEG fees, one-third access of programming and scheduling, as well as the staff roles and issues. This evening, I was given by Mr. Rankin a response of the Access Board to the process report, the final report, and I, he indicates he'll send it to me electronically as well. So I have not had an opportunity to review the report that was provided me this evening. I just wanted to acknowledge receipt, and my understanding is they've emailed it to council late this afternoon. After the June 20th briefing that I did as a facilitator to the stakeholders, the Access Board took it to their July meeting, and the after-action from their meeting, my understanding would be a report after they had a chance to review it and read it, and I believe that's the report that we just received. Following all the processes and meetings I described, I've developed six areas of recommendations, and so I'd like to highlight those for council this evening. And I really agree with the sentiments that Mr. Feldman and Mr. Rankin expressed this evening in terms of the value of the FCC TV station and the resource we have in the community. And I really also agree that we can, and I've seen some really positive progress in moving forward and benefiting and maximizing from that, and having more shows produced, both General Government, Schools, and Public Access. Public Access is the portion that the FCCAC represents. The recommendations include in, endorsing and moving forward with the three partners. As I said, I do believe it's a great community resource, an opportunity to have another tool to really do community education, orientation, and engagement. And as part of that process, I recommended reactivating the steering committee. As part of our process, we really worked on the roles and responsibilities in the charter of that steering committee, who makes it up, what are the processes, are they doing macro-level or micro-level management and so forth? In the report, that charter is also spelled out for you. There was one meeting scheduled for early June, it had to be rescheduled, and there has been one meeting that was held on June 22nd, as I noted in my report. My understanding is the sec, the rotation of this meeting is now going to alternate. And so General Government hosted the first one, School offered to host the second, and my understanding from Mr. John Brett is they're working on scheduling that, and then the third one would rotate to the Access Board. Having gotten to know the Access Board members and the roles of that nonprofit, I really concur with one of the statements they had discussed at their March 2017 meeting and had codified in their minutes, to really capitalize on their primary mission, which is to serve and work with citizens interested in producing and watching locally-produced programs. So as part of my recommendation, I fully support that and think we can work together with them to really capitalize on their primary mission of producing those programs. Two things that would assist in that is increasing their membership, so that they have more resources, both in body and financial resources, operating funds, and also increasing producers and editors. And the, as part of this process, the staff have conducted two trainings to date, have another one scheduled, so we've seen a lot more interest and progress in providing resources in order to get additional producers and editors. I have brainstormed with members of the Access Board on how they could do some more outreach and community work to get more people aware of, that they can join members. You can be a member without producing, or you can be a member and really take advantage of the great equipment and resource we have. One of the other recommendations is to institute a quarterly PEG capital use certification. PEG is standing for the Public Education and Government Franchise Fees that are awarded through the franchise agreements that council has executed for the use of right-of-way. We quarterly get fees from Cox and Verizon for the FCC TV station. They have to be used for capital resources only. And as part of the franchise agreement, we need to report out, there's been a lot of discussion and not always agreement on the allowable use of those funds. We've done a lot of research and code legally, internally with the city attorney, and with an outside counsel, and it is restricted to capital, and so one of my recommendations is start to certify where that money is actually being spent. We have a lot of capital needs on equipment that we can utilize, and it's not being spent as much as we can. The last June steering committee meeting, I worked through several items that can be purchased, which was positive progress. The next two are also areas where we had a lot of conversation, agreement and disagreement, and my recommendation still holds that the FCCAC membership be modified. Right now, they're a standalone nonprofit that have appointees from council and school board. So it makes the governance really unclear, is if the appointees from those governing bodies, are they representing the governing body, or the independent nonprofit that they're now members to? All valuable people, as Mr. Rankin indicated, he's been one of your two council members. Jerry Barrett is the other one. And I'm not recommending that those individuals be eliminated, but once those terms are up, do not reappoint, eliminate that function, and allow the Access Board members to be elected from their membership, because if you increase the membership, there's a bigger base to draw that. Their bylaws already allow for membership from, board members to be selected from their membership if school board or council don't appoint. And there already is one vacant school representative. I really think that clarifies the governance. It has nothing to do with the people involved, it is strictly clarifying roles and responsibilities. I also recommended retaining the fiscal and administrative management under the city government structure. Currently, city council funds a small operating amount of budget, is responsible for ensuring through the city manager certification, the PEG fees, hires and fires, and provides all the HR benefits, resources, and retirements, all the fiscal management piece, and then partners with the schools for the facility provision. Schools provide the, our general government provides the IT. That administrative function is one of the things we can do and have done for a lot of different functions. And if it stays that way, solving the partnership and the one-third and a lot of the things identified in the tracking chart, then the Access Board can retain their primary mission to serve citizens interested in producing and watching locally-produced programs. I will acknowledge that is one of the areas of significant differences that we've had with some, if not all, of the Access Board members. I don't know in this report that we just received if they've commented on that or not. And then the final recommendation would be to relook at the tripartite agreement to make sure it reflects current practice. We have a document that's decades old, it still references staff titles, positions that don't exist, it still references that it's managed under the school system, and some of the things that we've talked about through the Process Board could be better clarified in that document. So those are the six summary recommendations that I did after the six months of work with some great staff and community members, and I look forward to seeing things move forward. If council wishes to plan for a work session for follow-up with the Access Board and the school board members, we certainly can facilitate that. My goal is that the Process Forward has ended. We need to move forward in the governing structure and really start producing and airing programs. And I was thrilled to hear Mr. Rankin's date and time for his program. I'd heard what he had been filming on art, and I look forward to seeing that. That's just one of several recent programmings that I've been hearing the Access Board has been working on.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council's liaison to the Cable Access Board, my request is going to be that we do, as Ms. Mester suggested, one of her suggestions, which was bring this to a work session of the city council at whatever date in September it'd be convenient to do so. Commend her hard work over many months. I commend the participation of Mr. Feldman, Mr. Rankin, and other members of the board. I agree that, you know, I think we're making progress with the cable TV. I agree that, you know, I think we're making progress with the cable TV operation and getting, you know, more and better programming up. In the five years that I've been on council, I think the trajectory has been generally upward, but there are significant differences of opinion about particularly the management, the administrative fiscal management functions that Ms. Mester referred to, and I have exhausted my ability to mediate those, and I'm basically throwing myself at the mercy of my colleagues to take an interest in this. And to that end, if we could all be circulated the July 17th memo from Ms. Mester and this most recent today's memo from the Cable Access Board representatives, so that we could study that, those documents over our recess, and I hope take this into consideration in September.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being the liaison, Mr. Duncan, and I would echo those thanks for all the participants. I know this has been a long road to get where we are, and I know we're not done yet, so we'll keep pushing and make some more progress and get this over the finish line. Is there anything else that anybody wants to say? If not, we'll keep on moving.
And I'll certainly resend the report that I sent out in June.
Okay, great, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item then?
Sure, we're on to second readings of ordinances and other items requiring public hearings. We have TR 17-31, Resolution to Endorse the City of Falls Church Bike Share Preliminary Station, Citing Locations for Submittal of National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, Documentation to the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to do a brief presentation and get us up to speed on where we are. This is a critical step in our process in order to get the grant award finalized, so we can actually order the stations and get them installed. This evening, I want to be clear, is not the final public comment period, is to get the preliminary location resolution approved by council, so that we can proceed with VDOT to complete the environmental review, and I know that we'll be able to talk through that in a little bit more detail. So thank you this evening for this agenda item, and Carrie?
Hi, I'm Carrie O'Nino. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of city council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm working on Capital Bike Share, I'm the lead staff member on the project. So tonight, we'll look at what is bike share, how is it used, and what are the preliminary bike share station citing locations, and what was the process for identifying these So Capital Bike Share is a bicycle-sharing system that allows individuals to borrow shared bicycles on a short-term basis, and bike share is a networked approach to transportation with 440 stations that stretch across the DC area, from DC all the way out to Ruston. In July 2016, the City of Falls Church received $2 million in Federal Regional Surface Transportation Program, or RSTP, capital funds for bike share through the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, which were transferred by Fairfax County. An additional $500,000 in operating funds was received through the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission and the Commonwealth Transportation Board from the I-66 Inside the Beltway Multimodal Project in June 2016. Bike share station locations were identified through policy guidance from the Mobility for All Modes chapter of the Comprehensive Plan and the Bicycle Master Plan, input from boards and commissions and the public, and a ridership analysis conducted by Four Square Integrated Transportation Planning. And preliminary bike share station citing locations have been identified with assistance from the Transportation Planning and Engineering Consultant Tool Design Group, according to station citing criteria that have been used to cite bike share stations throughout the Capital Bike Share Network. As bike share is a federally-funded project administered through the Virginia Department of Transportation, it requires council action to endorse bike share station citing locations. Preliminary bike share station citing locations, once endorsed, will be submitted to the Virginia Department of Transportation as a part of required documentation for the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. An expected review time by VDOT for NEPA documentation is 30 days. Per VDOT requirements, the public comment period extends an additional 10 days beyond the date of the public hearing, so the comment period will be open until August 24th. Staff recommends extending the public comment period from the required August 24th date to September 14th, to allow additional time for comment by boards and commissions. If necessary, the preliminary bike share station citing locations item could come back at the September 25th city council meeting for any follow-up actions needed. So I have a presentation for you tonight. It's essentially the same presentation as May with a few updates. I can go through the whole thing if you like, or I can just go through the highlights.
Why don't you give us an abbreviated version of it?
Yes. So first, we'll look at what is bike share, how is it used, and why are we bringing it to the city? A lot of people use bike share for first and last mile connections to metro, where you check out a bike near your house and drop it off at a station near metro, and then take metro to your destination. You can check out a bike from any station and return it to any other station in the Capital Bike Share Network. A lot of bike share success depends on bikes that are durable and easy to use, and the idea with these bikes is one-way and short-term trips, mostly under 30 minutes. In terms of who operates bike share, the day-to-day operations of the Capital Bike Share System are managed by a third party, and this covers activities including station maintenance, bicycle maintenance, the cleaning of stations, equipment repair and replacement, and a call center and website. So the Capital Bike Share Network started in DC in 2008 and expanded to Arlington, Alexandria, Montgomery County, and Fairfax County since then. City staff anticipates installation of Capital Bike Share in the city in 2018. Next, we'll look at why are we bringing bike share to the city, and what is the policy guidance for this? So bike share extends the use of transit and expands the number of transportation options that are available in the city. And the city's been thinking about bike share for a while. Mobility for All Modes is a transportation chapter of the city's comprehensive plan, and planning for bike share was first discussed in Mobility for All Modes, which has a vision for expanded mode choice, where both bikes and bike share are part of the solution. The city's Bicycle Master Plan looks at potential bike routes, as well as bike share corridors in the city. The city's small area plans also provide guidance on bike share connections with metro, the WOD Trail, and the city's bike routes, as well as potential station locations. Next, we'll look at station planning and the process used to identify draft bike share station locations. In terms of planning criteria used to guide station citing, key destinations are an important factor, as is station density and connecting with city bike routes. Identifying draft locations has been an evolving process. The latest draft locations are in line with the city's adopted Bicycle Master Plan, and these locations connect with both the East and West Falls Church metro stations and run down the city's commercial corridors, and have people using the WOD Trail as a convenient way to move around by bike. So policy guidance, the consultant ridership analysis, and input from public engagement were all used to identify corridors and locations for bike share. And you can see the overlap here. The latest draft locations are located along the Broad Street, Washington Street, and Roosevelt Boulevard corridors. In terms of the citing of bike share stations, there are several criteria that provide guidance for this process, including sunlight, safety, visibility, and clearance. In terms of the station dimensions, city staff anticipates that most of the stations installed will be 12-doc or 15-doc stations, so the width of the stations will be 35 to 42 feet. Clearance space is required for a number of street, from a number of street elements, and access space is also required. So these pictures show a few types of sites where bike share stations can be located. Bike share stations can be located on-street adjacent to curbs, on sidewalks, and in parking Next, we'll look at project costs and cost recovery. Looking at project costs, we received $2 million in grant funding for capital costs of the project and $500,000 in operating funds. The capital grant funding of $2 million will comfortably cover the cost of the stations. In addition to the cost of the stations, the capital funds are also being used for soft costs, including consulting fees, right-of-way acquisition, and staff costs. In terms of operating costs, cost recovery from membership and user fees for the system would be between 30 and 60 percent. We also have some costs covered through station sponsorships and potential advertising Because of the $500,000 in operating grant funding, assuming revenue projections hold, the city could operate 14 bike share stations without incurring local costs for the duration of the five-year operating grant. The city can apply for additional grant funding at the end of this five-year period. Looking at project schedule and recent public engagement. So here's a draft schedule of what city staff is thinking about in terms of ultimately delivering the project. You can see from the project schedule that there are multiple components, including public engagement, funding, station planning, procurement, right-of-way, and installation, all of which need to be coordinated to keep the project going. So the effort for public engagement started in 2013 with the Mobility for All Modes Plan, and continued into 2015 with the Bicycle Master Plan, and station planning began in 2015 as a part of this effort. City staff anticipates installation occurring in two phases. An initial phase in 2018 for stations in the city right-of-way that are easier to install, and a second phase in 2019 for locations where it may be more difficult to get right-of-way. So these are the groups being engaged as a part of the public engagement process. You can see the planning commission, CACT, EDA, ESC, and the general public have been engaged as a part of this process. So looking at the agenda for what we just talked about, we looked at what is bike share and what is the policy guidance for the system. Next, we looked at station planning, and what are some of the criteria used for station citing? We looked at both the capital and operation costs for the project, and finally, we looked at public engagement, which groups are being engaged as a part of this process, and what's the schedule for the project? If there are any questions about the presentation, I would be happy to answer them now. If not, I can go through the highlights of the public engagement report.
Go through that. We're probably somewhat familiar with the public engagement, but if you can do, give an abbreviated version of that.
Sure. So bike share of public engagement with the general public involves two pop-up sessions at the farmer's market, a community meeting, and online participation in crowdsourced mapping. More than 85 people participated in the farmer's market and community meeting, most of whom were residents of the City of Falls Church. A total of 54 people participated in the crowdsourced mapping. In terms of takeaways from the general public engagement process, the station location that people selected most often was the West Falls Church Metro Station. Other locations that received a high number of votes were Northwest Street and the WOD Trail, City Hall/Cherry Hill Park, Eden Center, Pennsylvania Avenue, and West Broad Street, and Harris Teeter. Another takeaway is that 76 percent of participants in the farmer's market pop-ups or community meeting were very willing to repurpose on-street automobile parking for bicycle parking for bike share stations. Only one person was unwilling or very unwilling. Participants generally supported the staff-recommended bike share station locations, with special preference for the West Falls Church Metro and West Street and WOD Trail locations. Participants asked about the installation of additional bike routes and helmets for the bike share system. To address these concerns, staff recommends that bike routes from the city's Bicycle Master Plan be installed as a part of the Capital Bike Share expansion project, and that a helmet giveaway be planned to accompany the launch of the system. So if there are any questions about the public engagement report, I'd be happy to answer Okay. So next, we'll look at the preliminary bike share station citing locations. Before we get started, Mauricio Hernandez and Jeremy Charzan from Tool Design Group are here and put together these station citing locations. If there are any specific questions about the citing process, Stephanie Rogers, Transportation Engineering Supervisor, is also here if there are questions about the citing location. So these station citing locations were prepared using the station location areas developed through inputs from policy guidance, the bike share ridership analysis, and public engagement. And station citing locations were selected using the station citing criteria discussed in the presentation earlier, with the assistance of transportation planning and engineering firm Tool Design Group, and internally through the CIP Charter process. As you can see, there are 13 stations with draft locations. So Station Area 1 is the West Falls Church Metro Station. This location is in Fairfax County. City staff is working with Fairfax County and will mod it this site. The preferred location here is adjacent to the entrance to the metro station. Station Area 2 is at George Mason High School, and the preferred location is located at the end of the student parking lot. This location has been discussed with school staff. Station Area 3 is at Northwest Street and the WOD Trail. The preferred location is located on-road adjacent to the WOD Trail. Station Area 4 is located on Oak Street. The preferred location is on-street in two parking spaces adjacent to Flower Building. Station Area 5 is located on Pennsylvania Avenue. Preferred location is adjacent Panera Bread and would require the repurposing of one on-street parking space. Option B on Pennsylvania Avenue would require the repurposing of two two-hour parking spaces. And option C on Pennsylvania Avenue would also require the repurposing of two two-hour Station Area 6 is the municipal complex. The preferred location at Station Area 6 is on Park Avenue across the street from City Station Area 7 is at Harris Teeter, and is located just adjacent to the entrance to the Harris Teeter. Station Area 8 is on South Maple Avenue. The preferred location is located adjacent to Tenor Hill Project, adjacent to, on the on-street parking spaces adjacent to Plaza. And option B is located across the street in front of Aurora House. Station Area 9 is located at East Fairfax Street, and on-street parking spaces there. Station Area 10 is located at State Theater, and is located on-street on Park Place adjacent to Clarence Don's Beach Shack. Station Area 11 is located at West Columbia Street, and the preferred location here is on Columbia Street, on-street parking spaces about mid-block adjacent to Crosswalk. adjacent to Crosswalk. Station Area 12 is North Roosevelt Street. And this, the preferred location here is located in the lane that's being closed as a part of the Roosevelt and Roosevelt Project, so it would just be on that landscape area that's being created as a part of that project. Station Area 13 is at Eden Center. And the preferred location would be in the parking lot at this location. So are there...
I was gonna say, I'm sorry. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, listen, thank you for that fine presentation. Are there any questions here on the dice, Ms. Hardy? Why don't we start with you?
Thank you. I generally am fine with all these locations. I think I'm just glad to see the process move forward, so hopefully we can get things ordered. One question and then two requests. My understanding is that, once they're installed, it doesn't have to be permanent. So based on kind of us monitoring usage, we can always shift the locations to somewhere we think will get better access. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's really just staff time and, I guess, to move things as opposed to having to replace the equipment if we needed to find a new location for it?
Yeah, it's just $2,000 to move it. That's it.
So my two requests. I know that we've done extensive community engagement and it's been to boards and commissions. I don't think it's been to boards and commissions since we've had this detail of site locations. I would request that it goes to the boards and commissions again. I think I heard from you at the beginning that we were gonna have the public comment period extend till mid-September. So if we can at least get it in front of them, even if they don't have a meeting, at least electronically, I'd like to make sure that they've seen this final round of locations. My second request is, I think in general, people are gonna have a hard time kind of understanding what this looks like with a map. And I think it'd be helpful for us to actually mark the locations physically, so i.e. a sandwich board or a yard sign that says, "Hey, coming soon, bike share in this location. If you have feedback, email us at this inbox." Especially in places where we may be proposing getting rid of a parking spot. I think it's a great opportunity for people to actually see what it could be, what it looked like, whether it's a sign or just something in these actually 14 spots so that people see where it's gonna be. Whether it's positive or negative feedback, I think that's a good way to kind of actually elicit input as opposed to just putting out a map like this where people just says, "Oh, it's fine. You know, I'm fine with these locations. I'm just glad to see bike share coming." So I think having some physical markers where they're actually gonna be will be helpful and a good way to get input. And also just drum up publicity for bike share coming in hopefully six to nine months.
Okay. And do you want all of the boards and commissions? Are there specific?
Well, I think the minimum, the CACT and probably the EDA.
Okay.
I'd look to you all to make recommendations on who else would have input on this besides those two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. So somebody online asked a question about how much this program's gonna cost a few weeks ago, and I took a stab at answering. But basically, as I read what the staff report says, this is a free program here. There's money being provided for capital and installation, and then money being provided for operating for five years. So for five years, this isn't costing us anything except, of course, the voluminous time and good effort that staff has put into achieving it and the efforts of others on council to lobby for it. But it is an aspirational program, I think. I mean, as Ms. Harrison noted, you know, we're not yet a cycling city, and I think we all understand that up here. And yet, we do have aspirations to be a kind of community where we do walk and bike more. And bike share is, you know, along with outdoor dining, is probably, you know, one of the things that most clearly communicates. When you see a bike share station, you realize, oh, I'm not in, you know, deep dark suburbia anymore. I'm in a place that, you know, has a more walkable and bikable kind of vibe to it. So the short answer then is, program cost, free for five years.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And speaking of deep dark suburbia, the only question I would have about the placement of the stations is, for those of us who, not for me so much because I'm pretty close to Broad Street, but for others in the southwest end of town and Broadmont, you see big gaps in station locations for those areas. Now, that's because they are our version of deep dark suburbia and there's not a lot of commercial activity, but still, I wonder if we might at least explore a bike share station at one of the parks, you know, like on Randolph Street or someplace. And I'm thinking is that somebody lives around there and they wanna get to the metro, okay? They're not gonna like walk from Randolph Street to Broad Street and then get a bicycle. They're just gonna drive up to the metro. But if they could get a bike at the park at Randolph Street and ride it up to the metro, they might actually do that, you know? So I don't have any brilliant ideas about the Broadmont neighborhood, but at least for our end of town, my end of town, I wonder if that might be looked at. If there's any experience in some of the other jurisdictions about locating these bike share stations in, you know, non-commercial, non-heavily-trafficked areas, I'd be curious to know. And finally, I thank you to Mr. Stevens for coming on behalf of the chamber to express their support for bike share. It's very good to have the business community's support for this. They do note that they ask that short-term parking spaces try not to be used for bike share stations because they are highly valued by the city's smaller businesses in close proximity to them. You know, here again, the tension between, you know, we wanna walk and bike, but we still drive, just an awareness of that, which shows up in your report. You've got preferred options that generally don't take parking spaces, but there are a few where they do. If we're gonna need to do that, and I think we are in some places, I would just ask staff to see if, in those specific areas, something Mr. Snyder has talked about before too, if we could, you know, paint, you know, parking spaces in those areas so that cars arrange themselves, you know, sensibly, not erratically. Because sometimes you'll see around Panera and even over by the Flower Building, you'll see, you know, two cars taking up the space that three could easily fit in if they just all kind of arranged themselves sensibly. And they don't because we don't have any lines on the streets to help show where the parking spaces are. So if you're gonna take parking spaces up for bike share stations, those would be my candidates for neighborhoods where we would try to have some sort of visual aid that would enable us to, you know, I think, usually squeeze in one or two more cars than we usually get there now. Thanks.
Ms. Oliver?
Just to follow up a little bit on what Mr. Duncan said, I think any one of us could not like or love any particular spot, and we can all identify the places where we wish there was a station that we don't have one now. As I followed your timeline, it took us between, by the time we get both sets of, both phases of stations in, it will take us between seven, five to seven years to implement this program. Would the next round, if we were gonna add additional stations, take as long? Just, we started planning in 2011, I think you said.
No, I would imagine it would take less time now that a lot of planning has taken place already.
So if we put the stations in in 2017 and they were wildly successful, and then we put the additional stations in in 2018, is it, you know, what would you anticipate would be the timeframe before we might be able to look at other locations? I mean, would that be 2020, 21?
To add additional locations, I would anticipate it taking about a year, especially if they were in, located in private right-of-way.
And that would be impacted by the funding source, too. If we were using RSTP, which is federally funded, the right-of-way will be longer. So part of that would be the funding source, also the timing of funding because I would anticipate we'd go for additional capital funding at least to install additional stations.
So Ms. Mester, would you say that it would be more realistic to say that it could take us another two to four years to implement Phase 3?
I think two years, assuming we had funding awarded, would be reasonable because we have a lot of the foundational work already done, as Ms. Carey has described this evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Vice Mayor Connolly?
I would, following what Mr. Duncan said, I really would like to put a pitch in for, at some point, to have one at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Because it is in that, as I'm looking at this map here, it's in that southwest corner where there are a lot of people who live who would probably take it to the metro. There are a lot of people who go to Thomas Jefferson Elementary School to drop off their kids. There are a lot of, a lot of close residential development there. If we wanna get people to the metro, it seems like a good spot. I know your consultants are here and they've placed them at a lot of places, and you may say, "Well, it's too residential, not close enough to the commercial." But I do think that's a spot that we really need to take a look at. I mean, it's pretty close to Number 12, the Lincoln at Tenner Hill. It's pretty close to Number 5, and it does draw from a large community group. So if you have any thoughts on that, I appreciate that.
Thanks for inviting us. Mauricio Hernandez from Tool Design Group. We were the people that were actually on the field looking at these stations. So particularly with TJ, we do think that it could be a potential station, probably not in the first or second phase. Usually, when you implement a bike share system, you wanna start where people are already going to. So this is why we're focusing on the commercial areas, on the regional areas. I know Eden Center, a couple of my friends that live in DC, they all go to Eden Center, so they'd like a station there. I would, too. But TJ, we, there is a potential for having bike share station there. In fact, there's space, repurposing of parking spaces there. Currently, there's not enough density to put the station there. And if there is just dedicated funding, we would recommend that other sites go, we prioritize other sites on, over this one, on the first two phases of this rollout. Regarding your question about rollout, our experience has been that we need to, if you have the funding right now, if you said, "Hey, I have $2 million right now, can you buy me more stations?" It's usually based on funding. There is a general plan already in place. You all have already kind of those corridors still limited, which we think are very plausible for bike share stations. If you had the money right now, I would say between six months to two years, that is actually a very good estimate of time. Because you still have to order the bike share stations, and the procurement process tends to be a little bit longer. The procurement and the kind of delivery of the bike share stations and the other equipment is a little bit longer, so two years is good.
Okay. I've got a couple of comments as well. Does anyone else have anything to ask or say? One, I think this is great for the city. I'm really excited about rolling out bike share. I think it's gonna really tie our community together, allow people to get to metro much easier than it ever has been. I think it'll also attract millennials. Young people wanna get out of cars. They don't need two parking spaces in their apartments. They'd like to walk and they'd like to bike, and this will allow them an opportunity at very low cost to do that. I would also point out that I think we can add stations in new buildings, connection with new developments. It may not cost taxpayers anything ever as part of the TDN, the Traffic Demand Management Plan, for new buildings. We should be asking for bike share stations in new developments, and we've done that. For example, Founder's Row, even when that gets rolling, they have committed to have a bike share station at their cost on Founder's Row. Those discussions are ongoing as well with the Washington Broad Project. So I think this is a project throughout the community that can be very much self-funding to the extent we use private developers and private development to carry a lot of the water and a lot of weight for this. I think it also calls, reinforces why we need to have wide sidewalks. I look at the Harris Teeter project, you know, originally that the bike share was supposed to be in the little park off to the side. It probably is a better location in front of the building, but if we had a smaller sidewalk footprint or we had more clutter in that sidewalk area, we wouldn't be able to put it there. So to me, it reinforces the need to have 20 feet everywhere and clear width and some places to put things like this. I also would put in my pitch for a second station on the City Hall campus site. What I think we've done is sort of split the baby. There's one station in between Cherry Hill, the library, and City Hall, which I think is sort of suboptimal on all accounts, and having one maybe at Cherry Hill or at the bike, the library, and another one right in front of the community center, right on the City Hall campus, I think would be really exciting and would attract people from the farmer's market and other things. So I would just put my pitch in for that. I know we've talked about that at a previous meeting, but I'll make the pitch once again. I think that's all I've got. I think you guys have all done some great work, and I'm, for one, very excited to see it be implemented. So thank you for all your good service. All right, let's move on. Thank you. Excuse me? Oh, do we have a resolution we have to adopt here? We do indeed. All right, let's do it.
Yes, please, so we can keep the process going.
Can I move to adopt TR 17-31?
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we call the roll call, what I'm gonna ask for any public comment, which you've already gotten previously, is there anyone else who wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Let's go.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add, let's get going.
All right, let's do it. Let's do it. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
The motion carries six to zero. Thank you, counsel.
Great. Thank you again. Let's move on to the next item.
Yes, we have TR 17-15, a resolution to grant a special exception for a cottage housing development in the R1A Low Density Residential Zoning District on approximately 1.25 acres of land located at the east end of Railroad Avenue and comprising three parcels, real property code numbers 52-102-030 through 52-102-032, known as Railroad Cottages, on application by Railroad LLC.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Ms. Aubrey's gonna give a highlight of changes and updates to the staff report. We do have the developer present. I just wanna highlight, as we start, there's two motions before you on the staff report. One is to approve, and the second is an alternative to move deferral of the action to the regularly scheduled meeting of September 11th to allow any additional comments and issues that you wanna address to be fully vetted. So those are the two proposed motions before you this evening. Ms. Aubrey?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Carly Aubrey, the planning staff. The process for cottage housing developments is through a special exception process approved by council and then a site plan approval by the Planning Commission. The process for this project to date includes council refer the item out to boards and commissions on May 8th, and the Planning Commission recommended approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. The next steps would be, if approved, would be site plan and consolidation plat approval by the Planning Commission. As Assistant City Manager stated, tonight's staff is proposing an alternative motion to defer the item to September 11th to allow time to receive and review the license agreement with Nova Parks. We are expecting a copy of that later this week. Boards and commissions reviewed the project. There were, the majority of the boards and commissions supported the project based on the addition of diversity of housing stock, providing smaller homes for seniors, and an example of sustainable development. Two main topics were raised by most of the commissions. One was to ensure management of parking, and two groups supported the concept of the overflow parking aisle, which I will discuss in a minute. And some felt that the project was too dense and would be better with fewer cottages, more parking, and green space. Additional comments raised by some of the groups included, the distance between cottages and the carport areas and trash storage areas were felt to be too long. There was one in assurances and the enforceability of age restrictions, provision of effective stormwater management, request for an archaeological review, greater monetary contribution for affordable housing, and support for their proposed improvements to the WNOD Plaza area. We're all familiar where the site is. It's about a quarter, one and a quarter acres in size, and it's accessed by Railroad Avenue, which terminates at the site. There's single-family housing to the southeast and west, and to the north is the WNOD Trail and industrial zone parcels and uses. The site's approximately a quarter mile from West Broad Street and two-thirds of a mile from the West Falls Church Metro Station. The project includes, proposes ten cottages and one common house, each 1,500 square feet in size, shared open space, which is shown in this diagram, along the walkway, by the common area, and in this area. There's clustered parking on the west side of 13 spaces, pervious pavers and wooden walkways throughout, and landscape buffers around the perimeter of the site. There's fire safety improvements along Railroad Avenue, including grass paved, six feet in width along the entire length of the road, and grass paved reinforcement area here to provide turnaround access for a fire engine. On-site, the cottages would all be sprinkled. There would be a strobe, exterior strobe lights, which, when emergency services would arrive, they would, it would indicate which... services would arrive, they would, it would indicate which unit was needing service. Building height's limiting to one and a half stories, makes easy use for ground, ground ladders for emergency rescue operations. There is a fire hydrant proposed in this location, and the cementitious paneling or siding on the property, which is non-combustible. Cottage housing developments are, there's six special exception criteria that cottage housing developments are reviewed against. The first one is age restriction. The applicant is proposing 55 years or older and no residents under the year, the age of 18. The voluntary concessions, in addition to the condominium docs, have been updated to include these age restrictions, and a statement that they will not be altered without City Council approval, providing enforcement assurances for the city. The second criteria is that the site design encourages social interaction, minimizes impervious surfaces, and promotes low-impact development. The front porches faces a central parkway, or walkway, sorry, a common house with indoor and outdoor amenity space, and all proposed paving would use impervious, or pervious materials. And low-impact development techniques includes rain gardens and capturing the first inch of rainfall from roofs and parking areas. The third criteria provides for shared amenities in connection to the community. As stated, it would have a common house and a centralized walkway. It is adjacent to the W&amp;O D Trail, which provides connectivity to the shopping, recreation, and transit options on West Broad Street. And the voluntary concessions have been updated to commit to specific items, to outdoor amenities, along with shared bikes and transit info as part of the proposed TDM. The fourth criteria requires similar design and color details that blend in with the existing neighborhood. The cottages provide features that are common in the homes in the existing areas, such as front porches, roofing materials of shingles and metal, and siding and building modulation. This criteria also requires a visual connection with the surrounding neighborhood. The cottages provide less overall height and similar to or less massing than most of the single-family dwellings in the area. Landscape buffers would provide screening from adjacent residences. Landscape buffers and tree canopy, which are required to remain in perpetuity, would provide screening of the development from residences. And the voluntary concessions contain minimum standards for planting sizes and a seven-foot-high board-on-board wooded fence along the western property line, where fencing is not currently present. An additional voluntary concession provides for dark sky compliant lighting on the site. Given the site, the location between the industrial uses and the single-family uses and the design elements included, this project does provide a suitable transition in terms of use and intensity for the area. The fifth criteria is lead silver or equivalent. The applicant is providing for EarthCraft Gold certification, and additional voluntary concessions include geothermal heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, two-by-six exterior walls with R21 insulation, R50 roof insulation, Energy Star appliances, at least one electric vehicle charging station, and solar panels installed on the carport roof. The final criteria is that it's within 500 feet of a revitalization area that meets The plan has been reviewed with the Fire Marshal. He is supportive of the plan with the proposed enhancements to Railroad Avenue for both the proposed project and for the existing homes along Railroad Avenue due to the current substandard conditions. He's also supportive of the systems proposed for the projects, which I discussed earlier. Nova Parks has stipulated that the grass strip and specified turnaround areas are not permanent and can't grant long-term rights to the city. This is a standard requirement for all of Nova Parks license agreements, and the city would work with Nova Parks to ensure that enough time, if they ever needed it back, that there would be time to explore alternative avenues and improvements to the road. And as mentioned earlier, staff is seeking six-foot-wide easements from the property owners along Railroad Avenue for emergency access purposes. It should be noted that if any changes to the Railroad Avenue would be required, all the onsite measures proposed for fire protection would remain in place. And this is kind of a split screen of the improvements along the entire length of Railroad Avenue. They would be required to mitigate and replace any vegetation that needs to be removed for these improvements. The applicant has also provided voluntary concession of $50,000 contribution to be used for the rebuilding of Railroad Avenue to provide a more substantial base. The applicant has proposed a modification to the ordinance, and this was out of concern from the neighbors about the adequacy of parking. Section 48, 241B of the Cottage Housing Ordinance allows this council to modify the requirements of 48, 241 in order to achieve purposes of the ordinance. The section needing, that would need modifying, is the one that requires 20-foot landscape buffer along public streets, and it also prohibits vehicle parking. This, the highlighted area shows where the overflow parking would go. Staff contends that the parking, this overflow parking is not required. During the review of numerous cottage housing ordinance for our ordinance, the majority have the same parking requirements for cottages as they do for single-family dwellings. And the special exception criteria of being within 500 feet or revitalization area was to require these areas to be within close proximity to transit options. In this case, that would be an O D Trail and West Broad Street. Also, one of the concepts of cottage housing is to provide housing for those wanting to downsize, and this idea should also extend to the number of vehicles per household. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a TDM along, in the voluntary concessions, and this would include strategies to encourage alternate modes of transportation, such as shared bicycles, information in the kiosk in the common house on transit options, and informing purchasers and visitors that parking in surrounding neighborhoods is discouraged, and a notice would be placed in the common house. Staff in the Planning Commission does recommend that if overflow parking is provided, that it be installed after one year of full occupancy, to determine if it is actually required. During the site plan, objective standards will be determined to decide if the overflow parking is needed, and this condition would be included in the project's TDM and assessed as part of the annual survey. As mentioned before, staff is seeking the six-foot-wide easements from the property owners along Railroad Avenue. The applicant is willing to do this. This is where it gets tricky. So it could be if the applicant could install the grass pave now, if we're seeing that this widening along the south side of Railroad Avenue will be needed in the future. And it could be barricaded by some wave to not allow parking until such time, either if it's needed, or in the case that it will be needed for emergency access purposes. And then it would already be stabilized for that use. I think I've gone through most of these voluntary concessions. I think the only one I didn't was a plaque to commemorate the land ownership history of the property. During the first reading, or the first hearing, there was questions about by right uses and a four-lot comparison. The applicant has provided a scenario where a four-lot subdivision could occur, and it does look like it would meet all the lot frontage, minimum lot requirements, and setbacks. So when comparing that with the cottages, they are comparable in terms of building and impervious surface coverage. It is less floor area ratio and height with cottages, and there's more landscaping and perpetuity with the cottages. And there are comparable residents with some of the assumptions of two to five individuals for a single-family dwelling versus one to two individuals per cottage.
Any questions? Questions from up here. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey, for joining us. Question on the overflow parking. So I'm kind of confused. It sounds like originally there was a plan to kind of put it in, and now we're saying we're going to wait a year? Is that the recommendation? Am I understanding correctly where we are?
So, I mean, there's two theories. One would be to put it in now. A, it reduces, during construction, everything's already out there, so it would, you know, there wouldn't be a disruption in the neighborhood later on if it was needed to be put in. Staff's concern is that it's not needed. I mean, the parking criteria in the ordinance was evaluated thoroughly, and it meets the code requirements for parking. There's a TDM that's being proposed along with this project, and so it's felt that it's not needed. And then further, if we explore and obtain easements from all the property owners along Railroad Avenue, then it needs to be for emergency purposes.
Got it. So on the access on railroad, the original plan was we were going to get permission from the Park Authority on the north side of railroad, and that's what I think I read from the city manager, that we're pending a final letter from the Park Authority in the next week or two. In addition to that, we're also proposing or requesting easements for another six feet on the south side of railroad, so that if we get both, then we'd have 12 feet on both sides and make railroad double, almost what it is currently.
Six feet on both sides.
Six feet on both sides. Is that the plan, is that we hope to get both, or do we need one or the other? Like, what's the?
We would like, ideally, we'd like to see both. I mean, but the caveat with the Parks Authority is that because of their federal property ownership, they can't grant permanent rights to anybody for any kind of license agreements. The likelihood of them needing that land is minimal, but there's still that possibility. So we do need to provide, no matter what happens with this property, we need to provide some kind of assurances that we can improve that road if needed.
I guess Acting City Manager is, I think, the latest update I just read was that we are expecting some sort of update from the Park Authority in the next week or two. Is that correct?
Within two weeks and possibly this week, yes. And I think Ms. Aubrey has explained it well with the Nova Parks. Because of the federal land transfer and its history, they cannot do permanent, but they are obviously working with us here. They have done it at West End Park, where we have permanent access easement, and certainly the road itself that exists now has been something we've been able to work with them. So the extra six feet is just to increase the assurance for road access and just increasing the width. But we fully anticipate the one from Nova Parks within two weeks, certainly before your September 11th, if you chose to defer tonight.
A few more specific questions. I think we also talked about last time, a request to prevent, I guess, light pollution from the carport. Has there any changes or movement happened with that?
It would be, well, with the dark sky compliant lighting, there'd be requirements-
More for cars pulling in?
Oh, right. Well, the seven-foot board-on-board fence that's being proposed, and then also there is landscaping, 10 feet of landscaping between the carport and the property line.
Is that as good as a solid wall?
I would think so. I mean, a board-on-board's pretty solid, pretty opaque.
And then the other item was stormwater. Have we resolved what we're doing? I think last time we talked about needing an easement from a neighbor on Ellison. Has that been resolved?
So they did explore, the city and applicant explored getting easements from a few property owners. The one was not able to be obtained, but the city will continue to look forward to try and obtain that. And a voluntary concession has been added that the owner would seek easements for up to 90 days after this special exception approval. Regardless if that doesn't happen, state and code requirements dictate that they cannot make any drainage issues worse. They need to maintain basically the status quo. They are, preliminary analysis shows that through their underground detention and permeable pavers and bio-retention, they will, should be able to meet state and city code requirements. And this would all be evaluated further in the site plan, which is a typical process.
Follow-up and clarify. So the easements from the neighbors on Ellison Street, are these being sought to make it easier to comply with stormwater? Are these being sought to assist the neighborhood in their general flooding issue?
It's to assist the neighborhood. Mainly that area, that whole area's got some flooding issues, so it would be to address the overall concern, not just with this site.
So this is a voluntary concession to improve the area if the neighbors are willing to give the easement so that it can be done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Some more of a general comment. Given the extensive conversation we had at the beginning of the meeting about emergency access and still pending, I guess, the Park Authority's letter, it seems to be prudent to defer till September, till we have that information in hand, and also the after-action report from the fire investigation as well.
Okay, other comments? Vice Mayor Conley, questions?
Thanks, Ms. Aubrey. We had talked a while back about handicap parking spaces or making sure the spaces in the covered parking are wide enough. Has that, has that been widened, or are there handicap spaces?
There's, there's a, kind of more of a loading spot here that is sized for handicapped, and the intent is to have kind of loading and unloading for residents, dropping stuff off at the common house, or for these spaces here. But the parking spaces themselves meet the code requirements of nine by 18 feet.
But they don't provide any specific handicapped access?
No.
And we're not concerned about that?
There could be some additional space here if it's pushed down, where you could get an aisle possibly in here.
I just think that's something we need to look at. If this is a senior, you know, everyone, but someone breaks a leg and they need to get in and out of their parking space differently, I just, that just seems like something that we talked a while back about. Was it not, was it decided it wasn't important, or?
No, I think the applicant did explore that. Like I said, I think there's some space here, and then this size up here is space for-
That's not a parking space.
Then somewhere else, we heard that that spot may not be available because of the turnaround. So I just need a little more clarity on that.
Okay.
Thank you. The question about the easement from the neighbors, whether this project goes through or not, if, if council decides not to approve this project, then odds are that the four single-family homes would go in there. Would the city still be requesting that easement from neighbors?
Yes.
And in that case, if those four single-family homes go in, there would not be the turnaround, the emergency turnaround added with the grass pavers?
It would likely, if we were to do it, if it was to happen, it would likely be at city expense. And it would be, I mean, it's something we would look at doing, because there does need to be a turnaround area there.
Right. I remember seeing a letter from the Fire Marshal. Again, I've read so much material on this, so I don't know exactly where I saw it, but there's a letter from the Fire Marshal saying, "The current conditions right now are unsafe, and this will improve those conditions."
Right.
But then the additional request for the easement, that is a new request, is that on top of those things?
Yes.
As a result of the fire that happened, or because we've seen that we should use, have more there?
I don't think it's a result of the fire. I think it's been something that's, that's known to be needed.
Okay. So Mrs. Dorsey said, if it were to happen, she does, there's no space for them then to have a driveway. So how does that work?
Well, that's, and that's what needs to be explored.
Oh, so we really need to take a look further at that as well, to see how that six feet fits in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I know the manager did begin looking into getting something on that other side of the street from Nova Parks property prior to the fire, simply because we knew that the Nova Parks license agreement can't be permanent, and it would always give us a backup of additional six feet.
Okay. And then my last question is just about Nova Parks. What could they possibly put there, other than more bike path? They're not going to put a building there, right?
No, and that's why it's-
It's not as concerning?
It's unlikely that they would put improvements that their users would be using- Well, it's unlikely that they would put improvements that their users would be using right next to a road. But, I mean, it is just something that they can't grant a permanent easement to.
Right, but...
Well, my understanding is that at this point, they have a, some plans for widening the bike path, but it only goes up to, prior to the bridge over Broad Street, so it doesn't reach this part. And so, there's unlikely to be anything anytime in the near future, but they cannot, given their, the way they acquire their property, they are not permitted to give us a permanent.
So, if in 20 years, they want to add another lane on the bike path in that area?
Correct.
It would go through the grass pave? No.
Not likely.
Okay.
No, but I think it might require that they have enough, they have more space that we don't have a license of.
Okay.
If I might answer that. We had a meeting of a lot of people out at the Park Authority some months ago, and they talked about the second path that they want to do. Subsequent to that meeting, as the city attorney has just said, they decided for their aspirational widening through the City of Falls Church, it would end on the other side of the bridge. I'll point out, that's aspirational. That is many years in the future. But at the meeting that I'm referring to, where Carly was there and Jim Snyder was there among lots of others, we measured out with the Park Authority, if they were to widen the trail and put in a second one, how would that impact this area? And the answer was, it wouldn't impact at one iota. There would still be plenty of room for the background or the easements that were, not easements, but you know, the permission that we're talking about. So, for 50 years or so, not likely to be any impact.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Could I?
Yes, Mr. Duncan, of course.
Unless you want to go first?
No.
Okay, usually you don't. One of the citizens asked about the use of this land as parkland. We did actually explore that as a council some years back. I assume that purchasing this land for park use would involve city putting cash out to the tune of, what, it's an acre of land, so, I don't know, $2 or $3 million for the land? Is that, was it, was it examined that, you know, this might be useful as parkland by staff?
Sure. Yeah, the city, this city manager might be able to ask about CIP questions, but yeah, I would say $2 to $3 million is conservative.
During any of the recent work with the Wrexham Park Advisory Board in terms of their open space and areas they've identified, this was one in the long term, but not a priority. And it really came down to prioritizing and cost effectiveness. Some people wanted community gardens type thing, but it wasn't a cost benefit at the time with all the other prioritization and wasn't the target for the $4 million land acquisition that council had previously approved.
Okay. I mean, this goes to my question on most things of this nature that come before us, which is the "or what" question, you know, the "if not this, what"? One option would be parkland, another option would be four single-family homes, which we've seen there. Okay. I'd like to make a motion, but I don't want to make it before the mayor speaks.
No, go ahead, make a motion and then I'll...
Okay, because maybe...
Let me abbreviate my comments.
Move us along. I'd like to make it and then speak to it just for another second more. I'd like to move deferral of final action on TR-17-15 to the regularly scheduled meeting of September 11th, 2017.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second. Before we go any further, I'm going to ask for public comment, although most folks probably have already spoken. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed. Excuse me? That's for other case, that's for a next case. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Is there, we do have a second of the motion, is there additional comment?
Just, I want to say two things. One, I made this motion for two reasons. One, I do want to have the Parks letter in hand, I think, before we act. And two, I've been out of town for a couple of weeks and haven't had a chance to come around and visit with many of the people in my neighborhood who have, you know, strong feelings about this and would like to have the opportunity. I'll be in town for the next, as far as I know, for the foreseeable several next few weeks. So, I would like to have a chance and plan to make myself available for some further living room discussions. I've had a few with Ms. Harrison, the Keesters and others, but, because I know people feel very strongly about this. Anytime we have an issue like this, it's always hard to, you know, preside over a group of people who believe that we're going to, you know, ruin the quality of life in their neighborhood and depress their property values. Obviously, that is not the business that we are in here, but yet, we understand that when change occurs, there is anxiety about, you know, what's, what's going to happen. So, that's why I made the motion and I appreciate the second.
Is there other comment about the deferral? I would just note that I agree with deferring this to give some additional time to get more information and hopefully to continue to work with the neighbors. I would make one request. I don't know, the Dorseys are, you're the immediate neighbor, you're not, I don't know if you've had discussion about what kind of fence or wall with them, but I would just ask that maybe you continue that discussion if in fact, a board-on-board with landscaping is not what they would like to have there. Maybe you could further that conversation along and see if you can find out something that works between both of you all. But I do agree, I think a deferral is appropriate in this circumstance. Unless there's anything else, why don't we go ahead and move to a vote on the motion before us? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connley?
Voting to defer, correct.
Defer, final action to 9/11/17?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Great. Why don't you move on to the next item, please? Thank you all for coming out.
And we have one consent item is our next item.
Okay. Is there anyone who wants to remove that item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to remove it, but I want to ask Deputy Manager Cindy Mester, is part of this NVTA money?
Yes. This is the year-long negotiation on the 70% that reduced it to $150,000.
Right. This just underscores and along with the bike share, it takes an awful lot of effort to get any funding from NVTA, and this was a classic example of that. So, thanks much.
And this is the 70%.
All right, let's move on then to this item. Is there anyone who wants to pull this item? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to the Fort Meyer Construction Corporation in an amount up to $1,366,150 for the Van Buren Bridge project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk? Just go and do this roll call.
Yeah. Ms. Connley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Let's keep going.
We are to the Great Falls item. And does anybody have a statement?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the following statement. My wife and I are the sole owners of the property located at 116 Great Falls Street in Falls Church, which is subject of Item 10E1 on tonight's agenda. Under the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, I have a personal interest in that item and am therefore disqualified from voting or participating as a member of council on that matter. This was provided to me by the city attorney and I will exceed its requirements.
And I have a statement to read as well. Prior to being elected to city council, my law firm and I were consultant about, consulted about legal advice regarding the potential subdivision of the Snyder property. I've consulted, which is number 10E1 on tonight's agenda. I've consulted with the city attorney and I believe that my participation in rendering a decision on this matter may present a conflict of interest or conflict under the Virginia Legal Ethics Rules and other provisions. As a result, I'm refraining from participating in this matter.
Thank you.
Turn it over to Ms. Connley, Vice Mayor Connley.
So, we're going to take a five-minute break as these gentlemen leave. Vice Mayor Connley, I'd like to move that we extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Second.
So, moved.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Heath, can you call the next item, please?
I will. We have two items, two related items. TO-17-01, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of the City of Falls Church, Virginia by rezoning a total of approximately 51,454 square feet of land from R1A Low Density Residential to R1B Medium Density Residential for the residential property at 116 Great Falls Street and a portion of the Columbia Baptist Church properties at 308, 310, 312 North Maple Avenue and 103 West Columbia Street and rezoning approximately 26,845 square feet of land from R1A Low Density Residential District to T1 Transitional District for a portion of the Columbia Baptist Church properties at 308, 310, 312 North Maple Avenue and 103 West Columbia Streets with the real property code numbers 51-103-005 through 51-103-008, 51-103-023 and 51-103-024 on application by David F. and Edith H. Snyder and the trustees of the Columbia Baptist Church. We also have TR-17-26, which is a real solution to amend the comprehensive plan of the City of Falls Church, Virginia to, one, change the designation of approximately 51,454 square feet of land from R1A Low Density Residential 4.0 to Low Density Residential 6.0 for the residential property at 116 Great Falls Street and a portion of the Columbia Baptist Church properties at 308, 310 and 312 North Maple Avenue and 103 West Columbia Street. And two, change the designation of approximately 26,845 square feet of land from Low Density Residential 4.0 to Transitional for a portion of the Columbia Baptist Church properties at 308, 310, 312 North Maple Avenue and 103 West Columbia Street, the real property codes that I read in the previous ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Aubrey, what can you tell us about this?
The application materials include two main objectives. The Sniders wish to create a second single-family lot to allow a family member to build a new house on the lot. And this is showing the existing lot lines here, that doesn't show up, but then proposed lot lines would be this. The Columbia Baptist Church wishes to expand their onsite parking in what is currently the rear yard of historic properties located at 308, 310 and 312 North Maple Avenue and also on the existing T1-zone church-owned parcels. So, the applicant, application requests that all R1A property fronting Maple Avenue be rezoned to R1B for approximately 52,000 square feet and that an additional approximate 27,000 square feet in the same block be rezoned from R1A to T1. And then ultimately, subdivide the existing lots as shown and obtain site plan approval for the proposed development on the church property. At the June 5th meeting, the Planning Commission directed staff to bring forward an amendment to the future land use map in the city's comp plan to replan these same areas from Low Density Residential 4.0 to Low Density Residential, six units per acre and to Transitional. The city council granted a new first reading on this request on June 26. And additionally, the applicants have amended their proffered conditions to include certification of the Energy Star standards for the new single-family house and amend the CDP to include a two-and-a-half-foot landscaping strip to avoid conflicts between the proposed sidewalk and existing utility poles. This shows the current future land use map. The subject properties are in here. It's currently, this is the R1A area and this is the T1. And this, where the church building occupies is private institutions. The proposed change to the land use map includes changing this strip to R1B and then changing this to Transitional, basically extending the current Transitional line straight across. The city's adopted North Washington Street Small Area Plan speaks to preserving and enhancing North Maple Avenue, which runs along here, as a walkable residential street bounded by historic properties. As part of this application, the applicants are committing, the CDP specify the following: an installation of landscaping that shields the view of North Washington Street and surface parking from North Maple Avenue, an installation of a sidewalk on the east side of North Maple Avenue and preservation of the existing historic structures and their current footprints. The application advances the city's historic preservation goals with proffers exceeding existing protections in the code and expansion of the property at 312 approximately here to make it an R1-size lot that complies with code. Right now, it's currently undersized. And then also to increase its frontage from 55 feet to 60 feet, which would make it closer to the conforming 75-foot lot frontage width. There would be approximately, I'm going to go back. There's approximately 40 feet from the existing residences to the parking lot in the proposed T1 area. Maintenance of the historic structures and their current footprints and the continuance to be used for church purposes are provided in the, in the proffers. And the CDP would restrict development on the site to what is shown. And then they are including the existing condition or requirements in the code for property maintenance, they are also including repair and replacements of damaged exterior materials with like materials, regular roof inspections and bi-weekly landscape maintenance. This is the current zoning map, which shows this area, R1A, and then this area, T1. And I'll point out, the surrounding zoning includes townhouse residents, multifamily, T1, T3. So, there's kind of, right now, a assortment of zoning uses in the area right now. The proposed zoning would be to change this to R1B and then to change this portion to T1. As a general planning principle, development patterns should follow a pattern of higher density and intensity uses going from a commercial quarter and lowering as you go further away from that. This would apply with this principle. And then that zoning and land use planning should account for the context of the surrounding uses, which I discussed. Residential zoning, so from looking at it at a block level, the applicant, the amended application requests that the zoning pattern be simplified. The previous request was to have R1A, R1B, R1A and then T1. Now, we're just requesting R1B and then, as shown on the land use map, a low-density residential at six units per acre. Then the applicants are proffering also the construction of a sidewalk along this side of North Maple Avenue. And that is consistent with the city's small area plan guidance and would also increase walkability in the area. And it's also, would work in tandem with some ongoing neighborhood traffic calming projects, which includes curb extensions at these two corners and a mid-block crossing approximately here, I believe, might be here. So, that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant has a presentation if you wish to hear it. Are we going to take questions?
Do we have questions now or would you like to hear the applicant's presentation? We'll hear the applicant, please.
Good evening. My name is David Lasso. I'm with Baskin, Jackson and Lasso. I'm the attorney representing Columbia Baptist Church and Edith and David Snyder and Sarah Snyder in this application. Wanted to, I guess, just begin by saying that when we went to the planning... Wanted to, I guess, just begin by saying that when we went to the Planning Commission, a lot of discussion was about precedent, and that's always important, and indeed precedent is in many ways the foundation of planning. In other words, plan sets forth the goals and objectives in a particular neighborhood. Zoning should follow that plan. So, each time a government body takes an action in a land use matter, whether it's for the comprehensive plan or for the zoning, and thinking of the zoning as those are the regulations that are binding, planning is advisory and guiding. But each time you take an action, you set some type of precedent, a good one or perhaps a bad one. Our view is, is that what you have before you tonight is an opportunity to take a very good step and a, set a very good precedent. This is not some isolated piece of property in the center of, say, Broadmont, which is all R1A, or on the other end of town in the middle of an all R1B district. It's in an area that everyone recognizes and knows is transitional in nature. It's, it's a very large block with no interceding streets. It's got a church that's very active, very busy, that's grown over the decades, and it abuts properties that are zoned Townhouse, RTH, they're not zoned R1A. The strip along Maple Avenue, as you'll see in the diagrams, however, remained R1A. But as we begin, think, think in those terms of what's been happening in this block. What is the correct or better plan for it? What did we do in the past? Where should we go in the future? So, as you see here, and this is just an image, it's photoshopped currently, there's a stockade fence in front of the Snyder property. Behind that stockade fence is a pool that will be removed. It's a very large lot, and it's not really necessary under R1A that it be that large. So, there's some excess land here, so that even if you take that excess land, you're still going to have the Snyder home, which is a historic property on a conforming R1A lot. That's the house all the way on the right. The other three houses to the left are the existing small historic properties, and the new house is the one really immediately to the left of the Snyder home, and one of the proffers that you're going to be getting in this proposal is that it has to be designed in proper context with the existing historic houses. That isn't true in any normal subdivision. You have no control and would have no control over the appearance of the house. This is more of the view today, which is that stockade fence. Frankly, it's not a very pleasing environment. When I worked at my prior law firm for 18 years, I went by this every single day on my way to Tyson's Corner from where I lived, and it's a lovely area, but the neighbors, I think, all agree it could be improved. There ought to be a sidewalk along that street. It'd be nice if the stockade fence could go down. It'd be great if that gap could be closed in with a attractive home. Here you see the layout, and if I could just point out to you that this is the new home right here, this is the new lot line. Straightened it out. It used to be more like a K. It's been straightened out a little bit because we were asked to make it more regular in shape. That was one of the concerns of the HARB. They did not, as one citizen has written to you, oppose this. They simply expressed some concerns about some issues. One was the shape of the lot. We reconfigured the lot, and more importantly, we're going to provide for easements. This section here is going to be an easement to the benefit of this house, I'm sorry, to this house. This section here is going to be for the benefit of this house, the end result being we're going to be able to put a picket fence in right here so that by all appearances, they're going to look like exactly rectangular lots. So, we've achieved that as well. That's also a development condition and in the proffers. We were asked to make this lot, which was below 11,250, to a full quarter acre, and we took a piece over here and did that. So, that's been done. That's something you would get as a benefit. There's going to be a sidewalk all the way along here, all the way through here, which we've run the numbers because we've been wanting, you know, just what would that cost? That would be in the neighborhood of $100,000. Why? Because it's going to have to be designed. That's a cost. There's going to have to be grading, because these, if you, you know the area, that area's got to be graded, and more importantly, it's going to have to be acquisition of some easement area. The city sidewalk easement does not exist here enough to allow a sidewalk to be built, and we estimate about 1,100 square feet of easement's going to have to be acquired. You heard some numbers thrown around. Your earlier item about the value of real estate, it's been my experience that easements cost about 50% of the value of the fee simple land. So, if a square foot of land is 75, 80 dollars, the value of an easement over that land costs about 45 dollars. So, when you add that all together, a ballpark, which we, of course, would put in the cost of the raw concrete, that's maybe 20,000 dollars, but you add all those pieces together, it's about 100,000 dollars. So, that, that's important to note as you're looking at this. It's also important to note that there's already some sort of informal parking going on back here, and that's important from the perspective of appreciating that churches are by right uses in the R1A and R1B districts. In other words, these properties can be used for all the purposes that would normally be associated with the church because they're owned by a church. Think, if you will, of St. James, where they own churches. You remember that from Founder's Row, along Park Avenue. Those are still zoned R1B. It's not zoned T1, and so, St. James Church uses those houses. There may be some residential use there. There used to be. I think most of the use is office use, storage and, of items in the garages associated with those houses at St. James, parking, that sort of thing. So, that's important to understand, and that's true whether or not they're historic properties. Another point that needs to be emphasized, the historic ordinance in the city of Falls Church protects structures, does not protect uses, does not protect, per se, the size of a lot, although there is a requirement that if there's a lot with a historic house on it, you can't lower the size of a lot unless it stays 11,250, and that you respect the setbacks. So, I know there was a, a letter sent in by a member of the HARB saying there were a number of large properties in the city that are lots that are in excess of a quarter acre, and gee, maybe they would all be a cut-up and devoted to other uses well. The law provides that if you have a lot in an R1A that's in excess of a quarter acre, you have every right to sever off that additional piece of property so long as you remain with a quarter acre for the historic house. If it was large enough, say, two, you know, a half acre, you could create a new lot and a new house could go in next to an existing historic house. But it sort of begs the question, that's sort of a, a situation of what does the area call for? If it calls for single-family detached houses, then that would be perfectly appropriate. If it called for something else, then some other use might be considered. But the thought that suddenly by taking the action you're taking here, you could simply lift this up and go to the middle of established detached single-family neighborhoods is simply not correct. There's no precedent being established here for that. In fact, what is the precedent that you, you should be concerned about? It's this. This is the Foxcraft property, historic house. It's on a large lot. You can see it's even larger than was the Snyder property. That was used as a residence, and in the 2006, there was a proposal, it was also planned for single-family detached. The council changed the plan to Transitional, and it rezoned the property. When you look at zoning, that used to be R1A, and the council in 2006, recognizing the Transitional neighbor, aspect of this block, changed it to T1. In other words, they went even further than you're being asked to do today. They went to T1, so that now you have this little jog. It was perfectly appropriate, but that's the precedent you're, in a way, you're going to be following. You're going to be continuing with what this council did in 2006, and that's how planning and zoning ought to be. And so, here you see what's being proposed. As Ms. Aubrey pointed out, this is the area that will, will remain consistent with the comprehensive plan that calls for a residential street. It'll be R1B. Notice this area is now going to be squared off. It'll be T1. It was suggested to you in the past and in some of the letters that, oh, you're going to have different uses in lots, you know, parking here, house here. Well, in Falls Church, that's perfectly permissible. That's what the code allows, and so, there's nothing unusual happening there. The proposed property line, as shown here, remember now, the actual, there's going to actually be an easement that, so these two pieces will end up being straightened out for all practical purposes. And so, these were the summary of the changes after being all reevaluated. The future land use map is going to change. The properties get zoned to R1P, R1B. We straightened out the lines, the easements that are proposed for the fence, and if, and remember again that when we were here months ago, we were only talking about rezoning to R1B, the lot for the new house. Suggestion was that that was spot zoning. We submitted to you that we didn't think it was. We, we had a disagreement, but to rectify that, we worked with the city staff, we worked with the city attorney, and that's why that entire strip is all R1B. That's the proposal. So, any suggestion that this is now out of context, it's just a spot, isn't correct. And the new lot will fully conform to the zoning code for a residential building lot in the R1A, oh, R, sorry, R1B district. So, what are some of the benefits? You know, does the community as a whole benefit? The sidewalk, the entire length, is going to be constructed. There's going to be a landscaped area that we haven't talked a lot about, but that's going to block the view behind the houses. Right now, you can see all the way to Washington Street, but because there's a design plan submitted with this conditional zoning, there's going to be screening put in that otherwise might not be put in. The architecture must be complementary, which gets to the Historic Commission's recommendation. They were generally accepting and okay with this proposal, but they did recommend that the design be consistent with the existing historic homes. That's been assured. The historic houses will maintain their R1A setbacks, minimum lot size. There's increased safety for all. My youngest son attended daycare at Columbia Baptist Church, and even without that, we were there many, many times. You all know how busy it is, and it's probably going to get busier as the years go by, and there needs to be some reconfiguration. Need to remember, the church has been here since the Civil War. It's part of our community. It's the fabric of our community, and we ought not to act like it's an intruder. It isn't. It's part of the community. The neighborhood support has been, I think this has been well-received. The neighbors and Brett can talk to it, we think are in support of this. We ask that you, you know, after asking questions, give it consideration, and please vote to change the planning document, the comprehensive plan, and then vote to change the rezoning for the R1B and the T1 to the rear of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or wait till after the public speaks.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions now? All right, then I'm going to open it up to public comment, and I have Ephraim Schmidt as the first speaker. Come on up.
My name's Ephraim Schmidt, and I live at 305 North Maple, which is right across the street from the Snyders. First, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I've actually never been to a city council meeting before. First time I've ever done this. So, I'd say a couple of things. One, I strongly encourage you to vote for the proposal that the Snyders and Columbia Baptist are putting for you tonight. There are a number of different reasons. First, I think it is the most efficient, efficient usage of the land that we have in this area. As you know, Falls Church is growing, and it's difficult to try and fit in more residences, more businesses. This is a way that will be efficient both for the neighborhood, i.e. those residences around Columbia Baptist, and also for Columbia Baptist themselves. It accomplishes a number of things in doing this. First off, if you, if you live on North Maple, you find out it has turned into Washington Street. People are avoiding Washington Street, and they're driving up and down it all the time. We have accidents on North Maple and Great Falls on probably a weekly basis easily at that four-way stop. We also have it down by the four-way stop by Columbia Baptist. By having it so that the Columbia Baptist parishioners or other people using the building at that time have a parking lot to actually go to, and that those cars are now removed off of that street for parking, helps the safety of the neighborhood. Secondly, having a sidewalk there. The people who park here in this area, they usually are parking on North Maple to get to State Street Theater. They walk along the street every night when they're doing that on Friday night and Saturday night because there's no place to walk on that side of the street, and that's where they're going to walk. Why? Because that's where they've parked their car. Having that sidewalk there would be a benefit to the, to the neighborhood and to the city as a whole. Thirdly, having a place where it's actually much more residential, having that fence there, it's not the prettiest of fences. It's practical. It serves its needs, but as far as the neighborhood, having a house there would be much better for us. It would increase the property values of the homes in this area. And lastly, it gives Columbia Baptist an opportunity to have places for their people to park when they're having meetings, church services, and other things, which are always a benefit for the city, and so I'd strongly encourage you to support it. And as a neighbor, and in talking to the neighbors around this, we all are just really happy with this prospect. Thank you.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Gordon Thies.
So, I'm Gordon Thies, 802 Ridge Place. I really don't want to be here tonight. I, I don't want to speak against the desires of people that I know and have known for years, but my positions on zoning in Falls Church are well-known. You got to follow the zoning code, and so I've got to speak against this. Today's proposal for the comprehensive plan change and rezoning of North Maple should never have come before you. The Snyder family asked a simple question. Can we build a home for our daughter on land that we own? The answer is no. It's a simple answer because they're zoned R1A, which requires 11,250 square feet per house. Their existing lot is 17,300. Their existing lot is 17,300. They need 22,500, so they're 5,000 square feet short. What about R1B if we rezoned it R1B? Well, R1B lots require 7,500 square feet. So can they build on an R1B lot? No, they can't. Because by spot zoning R1B, they don't have enough property. They're 1,500 square feet short. Would a neighbor let them sell, or sell them 1,500 square feet? Sure, Columbia Baptist says, we can do that. We own adjacent land. But only if we get something in return. So they'd like you to give them permission to construct a parking lot in the backyards of several historic properties. That, of course, requires rezoning. But then there's the R1B lot issue. One lot can't be rezoned, so they have to change for parking. I've messed my speech up, I'm sorry. One lot can't be rezoned, and part of the historic lot would have been changed to T1 as well. So the solution is to rezone the entire block. But in order to do this, you have to change the 20-year comprehensive plan to reflect the increased density. So in order for one family to build one house on a piece of land that's not big enough, the city has to change their comprehensive plan. Does anyone not see the problem here? Furthermore, if approved, council will set wide-reaching precedents. In a city where there's enormous pressure to build single-family homes, any opportunity to increase density is a grand opening for developers. We've seen this before when the city began to allow substandard lot splitting despite existing code language prohibiting it. It took five years and positive action from council to correct the problem, but the damage was done, as you know. Rezoning a block to increase density to meet the request of a single property owner, be it existing resident or developer, is a great threat to existing neighborhoods. There's also the issue of historic properties which are protected by separate code language. Allowing parking lot to be built in the rear yards of historic properties or even residential properties in general is a really distasteful idea and in direct contradiction of the intent of the zoning code, which is to preserve and protect existing residential areas. Parking lots and residential zones are the exact opposite of preservation and protection. And lastly, there's proffers. The Snyders have agreed to allow a sidewalk to be constructed, but not in their yard, but rather inside the city street, which takes up existing street parking. Not a proffer. The church proffers, I've got two sentences. The church proffers landscaping of their future parking lot, that's a required element, so it's not a proffer. So should the city council be part of changing the comprehensive plan, block zoning, erosion of historic properties, and endorsing parking lots on residential properties to benefit one homeowner? No way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now questions from council members. Does anyone have questions? Ms. Hardy.
I'll start with one based on the public comment that was just asked. So based on, so I did watch the planning commission meeting and the comments about this. I've read the staff report several times, as well as all the letters we've received, and also took the tour of the neighborhood. I also run regularly on North Maple with my running groups. I am quite familiar with the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street in order to get to the trail. So the first question, hopefully the easier one, is between the staff report, some of the citizen comment letters, and just the public comment that was given, I've gotten mixed, I guess, comments about impacts to the historic zoning overlay that's already in place. Some of the comments have been that this proposal erodes it and other things in the staff report. And what Mr. Lasso mentioned is that they are actually exceeding the protections for the historic overlay. Could we clarify that point and actually talk more specifically at how we are either protecting certain elements or there's going to be erosion of other elements?
So the HCC code, when it talks about lot requirements, it basically says that lot requirements, if you do subdivision or something like that, you have to maintain the lot size, and you cannot go below what's required in the R1A. So 11,250 square feet, and you need to maintain the lot frontage and items like that. You can't go below what's required in R1A. But it does not prohibit rezoning or split zoning. And it talks about more in terms of, it does talk about more in terms of structures, what you, the processes for if you're wanting to demo a structure. And there are some basic maintenance requirements that you have to do to make sure that the structure doesn't fall down.
HCC protects the structures themselves but doesn't prohibit the split zoning as proposed here. Probably more subjective whether we think that is. Second question for the acting city manager. I heard Mr. Lasso quote that the value of the sidewalk was $100,000. So interesting, and left this morning or last night, I actually sent an email asking staff that same question, is how much is it worth? I think the number I got back from city staff was $20,000. Could we talk about the difference in that?
I don't know all the components that went into Mr. Lasso's estimate, but the estimate that I provided was through Public Works based on our concrete sidewalk task order contract that we have. So it may be from competition and competitiveness. We were just doing a basic five-foot concrete sidewalk with the minimal, you know, ADA and compliance issues in the proposal that Mike looked at based on our contract unit prices.
Ms. Wade, do you have an answer to that as well?
I do, yep. I just want to clarify, I'm Karen White with Walter Phillips. I want to clarify how we came up with our number. And so what we did is we prepared an estimate of the construction costs based on the Fairfax County bond unit pricing. Every year, they come up with a pricing. A sidewalk will cost X per square yard. A curb and gutter will cost so much per linear foot. So what we did, looking at the layout here, the cost to build the sidewalk also includes a curb bump out along Maple Avenue in front of the Snyder residence, involves new handicap ramps, some grading, some tree removal, and the sidewalk itself. So it's a little more than just the concrete cost itself. And that, we came up with about $50,000 for those construction costs. And then Mr. Lasso, I think he said about $100,000. I think that extra $50,000 comes from design costs and also the cost if the city had to acquire the easement from the church, the cost for the land for that. This is how we got to the $100,000.
And we had no design, right away, no bump out and ramps. This was literally the 540-foot sidewalk length times five feet because we just had a quick opportunity to do analysis.
While we're looking at this, when I walked this out yesterday, my understanding is that we would be eliminating parking in that first stretch of North Maple. Have we calculated how many loss of on-street parking spots that is?
The question was loss of on-street parking?
For that first stretch, because I understand that that's where the sidewalk would be constructed, and then it wouldn't be until past the new lot, kind of where it kind of jogs back in, where we would then allow on-street parking again. Is that my, is that my understanding?
I would estimate, right, yes. And I would estimate probably four to five, but I think, do you have the plan? I have the plan right now, so she can.
We are losing some spaces where the bump out is, but we are able to gain some spaces because we are closing the existing driveway entrances that enter on Maple Avenue. So I don't, I can come, I have a number here I can come up with in just a second, but I do believe we are, we might be losing one or two, and I can confirm that. But it's, we make up some with closing the entrances.
When I walked it, I thought it looked like six or seven in that stretch, but maybe you gain three by closing the curb cuts further down. Is that, I just don't know whether someone with more technical experience than me walking the street.
It's four or five. It's really along the yellow house on the left, the Snyder's existing house, and then in front of the new house, those spaces would be lost. But then there are driveways for each of the three historic houses. They get closed off because their parking really is in the rear of the house. So then you pick those up. So we lose, we lose a total of four, Karen says.
Happy to let other people ask questions if they'd like.
Any other questions?
I do, but I'm happy to pass it on to someone else if they want.
Ms. Oliver?
I just have a comment. I don't need you to make it now.
Mr. Duncan?
Could I ask the city attorney to speak to the question of precedent? There seems to be some, you know, difference of opinion. Let's say I have a, you know, grand old historic home which I could shave off, you know, a certain amount of land and create a compliant lot next door to build a house. What we're talking about tonight would affect me in what way?
Well, I think Mr. Lasso was right when he said that everything the city council does is create some precedent. But the precedent that you create is that other people who are similarly situated should be treated the same. And I think there's a number of things about this proposal that make it such that very few properties would be the same, and in fact, most of the R1A properties, even if they're large, would not have the same type of circumstances. For instance, one, the first thing you're being asked to do tonight is to amend the plan so that this strip of land that's going to be rezoned to R1B will be planned for low-density residential 6.0 units per acre instead of 4.0 units per acre. So you wouldn't be, or staff would probably not be recommending that you rezone to R1B unless you had that underlying planning for the site or for the area that allowed for six units per acre. The vast majority of R1A property in the city, even if they're larger lots, are not going to be planned in a way that would support rezoning to R1B. You could replan them, but most such sites would not have a similar land use pattern around them to this one. As has been noted before, all along the North Washington Street side of these properties is T1-zoned already and transitional on the plan. And even across North Maple is zoned RTH. It's planned, actually, medium-density residential. So this is really a little pocket of low-density residential. And so to zone it, it's the lowest of the area, and it's not necessarily, or rezoning it to R1B is consistent, or replanning it to this area is consistent with the surrounding land use pattern. If you were out where there were lots of R1A properties, which are, they're great areas in the city, you would not have that kind of land use pattern that would support the replanning that then enables the rezoning. So most properties would not be similar to this one. Another thing that makes this an unusual property is three of these houses are owned by the church, and one of the proffers is that they will continue to be used by the church. And so they are church uses, and therefore, some of the decisions about this whole zoning plan are made based on the fact that they will be, they're in church use and part of the larger church property and not like every other single-family residential property. And finally, I would note that this is a big package of rezoning, and there are proffers that will govern how all this land is used, and that has to be used in accordance with the conceptual development plan. So what staff has looked at is the benefits that the city will achieve to its historic preservation goals and other things that have been mentioned tonight. And most properties who just wanted to come in and resubdivide would not have those elements in support of a rezoning of this type. So most properties would not be able to simply do this so easily. Now, if someone had over half an acre that could be subdivided, that could be done today as well. But this won't set a precedent that will enable that in, I venture to say, virtually any other circumstance in the city, although you can never predict exactly what it is. But no one would probably have all these elements that would support them getting a rezoning just because this site did.
Okay, thank you. One other question, if I could. Mr. Lasso referred to, you know, the conditions around the church and the daycare center and so forth. My son also went there many decades ago, so I'm familiar with the way that area functions. I wonder if the applicant or someone with the church would speak about, you know, the plans for realigning Thurber Court with the entrance to the church and whether that, that's not under discussion here tonight, but it is, I think, something that I've heard talked about, and I think personally it would be a big public benefit to the church and to the citizens if that can be explored. Is that contemplated in some of the drawings here that you could just give us a quick show of?
Yes, sir. Brett Flanders, executive director of Columbia Baptist. Our long-term goal is to get our, currently, our playground is on the R1A section of the 103 property, which is already split zone. It's across our parking lot from our building itself. We would love to be able to move that up against the building so that our children don't have to walk across. We'd also love to be able to take that entrance, which is alongside of our building, and align it with James Thurber so that we're not having an entrance and a road on Maple that do not coincide, because it makes it a challenge to turn out of both. We'd love to be able to do that. If we could do, move our parking over here, we'd then be, open up that space so that we could move our playground up against the building. If we don't have this parking, we need to maintain the parking that we have now, which makes it very difficult to, the entrance, which makes it impossible to move the playground up against the building, so.
Thanks. Just for the sake of, you know, community disruption, is it conceivable that, you know, we could, and certainly we don't want to build a sidewalk and then tear it up. I mean, that would be the ultimate idiocy. Could we, you know, conceive that we might be able to sequence the sidewalk construction and some realignment as you discuss?
Sure. We would love to be able to do one big site plan for everything that would include this as well, as well as that realignment.
And that kind of activity would be my right activity, right? I mean.
As far as I know, yes.
On your land and for church use, wouldn't require us to go through further legislative proceedings. It would be an administrative function. Is that correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Staff is nodding its head.
Right, through the planning commission.
Thank you. Okay, that's all for now.
Ms. Hardy?
Good for letting me resume. So I do want to spend more time on this precedent question. So going back to the, what I think I heard from the city attorney say, that everything we do kind of creates precedent, but your assessment was that in this kind of similarly situated kind of parcel, we didn't think that there were many other places where this could be applicable and would be relevant precedent. So my question is, does it really require kind of the exact circumstances of having kind of a church nearby, being kind of in a higher intense use? Or could the two precedents be set here? Is one, any sort of R1A residential lot that might be near a transitional zone or could be split zone to allow rear parking, does that create precedent for situations like that if it was, say, bordering Park Avenue or Broad Street that has that kind of higher intense use? Does it create precedence for those, I guess, property owners? And then second, does it allow essentially any large R1A lot to be subdivided by rezoning to two R1B lots or one R1A and one R1B, as long as they were, again, near a higher intense use? So not necessarily adjacent to the church, because obviously, we don't have that many properties adjacent to church properties. But just, the argument could be that if you're near higher-density uses, could you make that argument that by allowing this, you give permission or you set precedence for those types of cases as well?
Let me take the second question first. I think that the problem with just rezoning to R1B anyplace is that one of the first questions, if such an application came in, would be, is it consistent with the plan? And the fact is that most places, and I don't know, I haven't studied this, but I believe that most places, R1A land is planned to be low-residential 4.0 units per acre. So rezoning that land to R1B would not be consistent with the plan. It would require some change to the plan. And one would have to look at each situation and determine whether or not the plan, or whether or not the land pattern in the area supported, or there was a good reason to do that kind of change to the plan. But it wouldn't allow any property owner in the city to come in and say, I want to be R1B land, because most land would not be supported. The plan wouldn't support it. And as I went through, this area has a very different type of land use pattern because it's so close to the North Washington Street corridor that it really does support that replanning effort. In fact, this strip remains at R1B, the lowest on either side, in terms of what it's planned for. And so I just think that there's going to be very few And so I just think that there's going to be very few areas where our, where staff would, might support, and we don't know, a circumstance might come up, but I think it would be difficult in most areas of R1A to support a change to the R1B, because you have vast areas of R1A, the single-family housing, and they would remain, they, that's the plan that they have for the future land use in that area. And the second question, which is about the split zoning, and I look at this in two ways. There's two things about it. There's split zoning of your lot. And then, what I see as the more difficult objective to achieve, I mean, I think split zoning of lots can be legal, but then the question is, what is the use? And in this particular case, we're allowing the use of church parking on the back of the lots. And the reason that I think that works here and wouldn't work most places is because these properties are in church use. They are really being allowed to have both a single-family house and parking, two uses on them, because those are all church uses. And so this is, they're being treated as part of the bigger church property. And I just think that that, if properties didn't have, weren't part of a church, a bigger land use, they, staff would not support putting the two different uses on the lot. And so that's not something that would also, that would not have precedent unless it's a church-type property. And then they, we would allow that today. We would allow both church uses to go on those properties. I don't know if that-
Kind of. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I have some questions. One is for Columbia Baptist Church. As you replan out your parking lot and your playground, do you also expect to keep some of that parking for parents to pick up and drop off, off of Maple Avenue? Is that part of this plan? Because I know a lot of parents now pull right in there, hop out with their kids, it's dangerous in the morning, so is part of your plan to get all those parents off the street?
Yes. That's pretty much, this entire area is focused on mostly getting the parents to park here, because a lot of the feedback we get is that the main part of our parking is on Washington. So being able to, may seem like it's short, but as we know, most people run in at the last minute and want to drop a kid off. We already try to keep people off of Maple, but it's a challenge, because they have to walk an extra 150 yards or so. So the goal is to have this be the parking area for the drop-off of the children, realign everything so that it flows a little better, and then have the playground so that it's more safely located on this side of the parking lot.
I also have a question about the distance between the historic homes and the parking lot. Someone mentioned it was 40 feet from the rear of the historic home to the parking lot?
That's correct.
Okay. And the landscaping. Dr. Thies mentioned that no matter what happens, the landscaping has to happen. With these proffers, is there more landscaping? And as we talk about the cottage housing, there's buffers and there's landscaping. How much landscape is included in the proffers, and how much would be considered at site plan?
I believe the proffers does reference the landscaping on the CDP, which is what code would require.
So there's nothing special with the proffer beyond the code? Or is there more there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is Ms. White, are we?
So I, right now, the plan we show meets code for buffering and landscape covering and interior parking lot landscaping. I don't know if it's in the proffers, but one thing we did discuss and is shown here is kind of a hedgerow or heavy planting between the sidewalks. You have the parking, a sidewalk, and then the single-family home, so trying to have kind of a hedgerow-type buffering there to kind of, so when you're on Maple Avenue and you look through, you don't see the parking. That's one thing we've shown. I don't think it's necessarily written out, but other than that, it's just meeting the required buffers and interior parking lot landscaping.
Right. So is there a way we can write that hedgerow in there? Because I think that's important and valuable to the neighborhood as well. It's shown on the picture.
It's shown on the plan, and I believe everything is in, the approval is in accordance with the CDP.
To be clear, what I, what I meant, in addition to what I said earlier about the land, in other words, if you don't do anything, you're going to have that visibility problem that exists today. There's no, parking lot won't get built. There won't be any buffering in the back, there won't be any landscaping in the back. So in going through, all of the various rules and regulations kick in. And then I just might take the opportunity to say, with regard to precedent, remember, when you take a legislative action on a rezoning, it is just that. It's a legislative action. You always retain the right to make your best judgment call on rezonings. So when somebody says, oh, that's a precedent, you absolutely positively have to follow it, you have to remember, that's a bit more nuanced than that. You decide, within reason, how things ought to be done. You listen to your professional staff, you hear what they have to say. And remember, here, your professional staff has studied this extensively, made recommendations to you. It's been to the boards and commission, and their commissions, and they've all been fairly consistent. Now, it's your turn. You get to exercise legislative decision as to how you think this ought to pursue. What I was trying to say to you, if you, if you want to say, you know, let's give some impact, if you will, to a precedent, remember the Foxcraft property. There, property that was R1A, was not just, you know, upzoned to R1B, if you will, by letting more units, it went to T1. That is now a commercial property. So we're, we're not going that far, and we just leave it to you to exercise your sound judgment. The, I can't say it any better than the city attorney has said it when it comes to precedent.
Do you have any other questions?
Just one small question. On the parking for the historic houses, there's going to be dedicated spots behind the houses for the residents of those?
Sure.
So now, they would park either on the gravel pad in their front yards or on the street?
Correct.
They would have dedicated spaces off-street.
Marked spaces that they could only park in, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions? Comments? Or I guess, do we have a motion?
I'm going to move to adopt TR-17-26 and TO-17-01.
A question. Do we have to vote on them in order or take separate votes, or are they paired?
You could do them together. If, it might be good to do them separately and take the plan first, the plan amendment first. So TR, whatever the number is, do that one first.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do you want to move on the first one? Ms. Oliver?
Madam Vice Mayor, I move to adopt TR-17-26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any comments?
Well, we're all here having fun. I guess I might as well say a thing or two. First, I want to appreciate the work that the applicant and the neighbors have put into this. It's been a very substantive civil debate. Anybody who knows me knows that I did not get on city council to become an expert in the intricacies of the zoning code. I'm always admiring of those who know more about that than I do. I've come to understand, you know, the importance of balancing homeowners' reasonable expectations of continued, you know, peaceful use of their property under existing conditions with my impetus, which is usually for zoning and planning to be more of a living, breathing, and adaptive process, that recognizes changes in market preferences and community conditions, and in this instance, takes into account the, I believe, land pattern of the area, was the phrase that was used, which is what ultimately moves me to vote in support of this. I, I too took a walk of the site there yesterday, and as I say, I'm familiar with it from when my son was in daycare there. And to me, there's just a number of opportunities that this application presents to us for an improvement of the conditions in this area. One of the neighbors spoke to some aspects of that. The historic houses, you know, right now are, they're fine, but, you know, there's the ye olde gravel pad in front, which will go away, and there's the ye olde scruffy back lot, which will be, I think, improved with the project that's suggested. And it is my hope that the church will proceed with the improvements that were discussed by their representative and align their entrance with James Thurber Court. I think that promotes safety for not only their users, but also for the neighborhood. I think the sidewalk is a significant, it's always significant when we can build a sidewalk here in the city. It's not easy to do, and it, it does, you know, further our objective of a walkable city. It connects a very important institution, which has a lot of people using it for not only church reasons, but, you know, municipal meetings have been held there as well. Connects that institution to, you know, our downtown by way of a continuous sidewalk. I think that is important. Ultimately, I believe, I expect, probably not too many years from now, the church will, you know, want to do a significant construction project on their side of North Washington Street. And I would hope that our action tonight would demonstrate to the church that, you know, our vision for the city as a community that is committed to quality growth is, applies to everybody, applies to commercial interests and also faith institutions. And I would hope that we could work cooperatively with the church when they do that project to perhaps consider other community amenities or needs or benefits that might be factored into that project. So my vote tonight is mindful, not only of the particulars of what's proposed and my general view that they're positive, but also, my vote's cast with an eye towards the future and hoping that we could take this area, which is kind of a hodgepodge, if you walk it, sort of surprising that an area that is so close to, you know, the heart of the city is, looks a little unfinished somehow, that, that we can do something that really enhances the community and the church's interests too, in the not-too-distant future. So thank you all for hearing me out, and I appreciate those who've come to speak on both sides, because I've certainly learned a lot, and I appreciate the staff's work on this, which goes back many years. Thanks.
Anyone else? Oliver?
So I was thinking about this question about, you know, what's the purpose of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances in general? And they're to sort of support what the community wants to do with the space. And I think that the applicants have brought forward something which is a prime example of cooperation and compromise. This is, I think, a very good example of a very long process. I'm conscious of how long this has been going on. But during this long process, what we had was, one homeowner had an idea, they talked to their neighbor, they talked to the neighbors across the street, and in the end, when I look at all of the people that have spoken about this project, I'm struck also by the fact that we even had one email from somebody who lives a half a mile away, who saw a benefit to the work that's being done here, that the safety that's being created through this sidewalk, through the bump-out, which actually does a lot for traffic calming and does a lot to make it safer for pedestrians crossing the street by providing visibility, granted at the expense of four spaces, but that is a huge benefit. And I know that this street has been before the neighborhood traffic calming program about improvements. So when I look at this, I see cooperation, I see compromise, I see a wide range of the community that sees a benefit in what's happening here. I see a plan, I see a proposal which is going to provide the historic preservation, it's going to maintain and enhance the residential nature, it's going to provide some, some benefits on traffic calming, and it's also going to provide some screening, which everybody that walks by there and lives by there would like to see. So I think this is a really good example of why it makes sense to adjust the plan and to adjust the zoning, because this is something that does reflect a community will. And that's why I personally am proposed to vote for both of them. I'll just say that now, so I don't have to repeat myself.
Hardy?
Thanks. So I do want to echo Ms. Oliver's comments. I do think that the applicant did a really nice job in rallying neighborhood support and kind of working through many, many iterations of this, so we appreciate your patience. In general, I am excited about the idea of a sidewalk there. I think it is much needed. All the benefits we've talked about, I think, are going to be a plus for the neighborhood. The thing I personally struggle with is this precedence question. So I think, as evident by the line of questions I have, that is something I still personally am uneasy with. I, in general, support the idea of actually more dense housing, especially in a neighborhood like this, where it is kind of transitional to kind of higher uses. And so I don't actually have a problem with, you know, adding another house and trying to do that subdivision. My questions are really more, does this create an opening for other uses across the city where it may not be desirable, where it may not fit as much? So that is where my uneasiness is. It's nothing with the proposal itself or where it's located. I think you all have done a nice job with the application. My concerns are really more this precedence question, and I'm not yet comfortable with that.
Given the late hour, I'm going to agree with Mr. Duncan and Ms. Oliver. So I think we're ready for a vote on TR-17-26.
Vice Mayor Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one.
Madam Vice Mayor, I move adoption of TO-17-01.
Second. Have any comments on this one?
Vice Mayor Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much.
So what else do we have here?
Standing and Regional Committee report?
Are there any reports?
I don't have a report, but I actually had a request that I didn't make earlier. We didn't talk about, we talked about this briefly last time, about kind of the communication plan for the high school plan. Is that something that we'll be able to talk about in work session when we reconvene in September?
I will report that out to Mr. Shields on follow-up, and I'm sure that would be appropriate.
While we're making requests, I didn't have time to make this request earlier. We had a comment about the neighborhood traffic calming program and the hope that we could push that stuff through as quickly to the start of school as possible. I just have two follow-up items I'd like to sort of raise for the same thing. One is the sidewalk on the north side of Broad Street in front of Beato's, whether we've made any progress on that. I don't need an answer now, I just want to come back to that. And then, the second question is about the re-timing of the traffic lights on Broad Street. I wanted to check the timetable on that.
We have a contract out to do our analysis of all the signals, to do the re-timing, but we held on the data- we held on the data analysis because school's out, and it really makes an impact on your traffic when school's back in session. So the plan is to have that completed by the end of September, so we could look at all the re-timing of all our signals.
And that would mean re-timing when?
Let me verify, but I think it basically proceeds right into October to do it, but I can verify the actual timeline.
Okay, that would be helpful. I'm just seeing a lot of people crossing Broad Street because the timing is off against the light, and that I'm concerned about with school starting.
Yeah. And we have one intersection at Broad, I believe it's Broad and Maple, where the signal is actually, conduit is actually giving us problem, and so there's a mechanical issue that's being investigated. So there's two things. I'm not sure if that's where you were referring.
Do you have anything else? Go right ahead.
So a couple of things. The Economic Development Committee, I think, has finally resolved that it will meet during recess on August 28th at 10:30 a.m. Is that right, Ms. Hardy? Okay. We've been in communication with the city manager about the agenda, so I assume that'll be worked next week. And we'll be teed up for that meeting on that Monday, the 28th. Just FYI for others, I've asked the city attorney for an opinion about legality of golf carts and other low-speed and possibly electric vehicles, their use in the city. And she's indicated that she could get some information to us on that by the time we get back in September. And I did want to ask the city attorney, you'd given us, I believe, thoughts in writing on the question of compatible harmonious in regards to the inside project. Were those comments, you know, able to be made public, or were...
I can be sure that you have something that can be made public, so I need to go back and look at it.
Okay. That'd be helpful. I think I've got a citizen question about that, and I just didn't know. I thought probably it could be, but wanted to let you have a chance to look at it. And finally, and very briefly, I just want to put down a marker to make sure that we have a discussion about how the city is going to program Civil War Day the next time it comes around, in light of recent developments. But really, it's a conversation that we had even the last time around, and I just want to make sure that we don't neglect that. And speaking of neglecting things, holiday lights for the trees is something else that while we're on recess, I hope staff continues to work. And by the time we come back, it'll be, you know, September, obviously, and time may be beginning to be short to do what we want to do. Thank you.
I have one thing, just to remind people that Sunday, September, well, I guess Saturday, September 16th is the Fall Festival, and Sunday, September 17th is the Run for the Schools. So invite everyone to spend the next month preparing for the Run for the Schools.
And the League Forum on the bond reform question, I understand, is also that Sunday.
So it could be a very busy weekend.
In relation to Ms. Hardy's question about information, I think we'd already said it would be very helpful for the back sheets to be available for the Fall Festival and also for that forum by the League on Sunday, the 17th.
Thank you. So moving on to number 14, approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from March 13th, 2017.
Can we defer that till we have the rest of council?
Sure, I'll bring them back next time.
Just line three, I'll forget next time. Line 377, it's not and, it's an, I think.
Are you sure?
So I can toss this one. I don't have to carry this around for a month, right? Thank you.
Anything else?
To adjourn.